Aloha everyone, aloha. Okay, we can do that one more time. Aloha mai kako, aloha. All right, whoo, that was a nice drive on the way in. We have some friends from town and they was just loving all the extra time they could look out into the water. So mahalo everyone for coming, uh, for those that are not from the west side, welcome to the west side. Uh, my name is Samantha Decord and I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six, and I'm calling this meeting into order. Today is May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and we are meeting in person at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. We do have a very full agenda tonight, so, uh, to keep the items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. Uh, if anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone. That's to my left, your right. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes. Officials' monthly reports, under three minutes, and it's under ten minutes. I, hmm? Jeffrey will be keeping the time, so you'll see it on the screen and then, uh, we will have you wrap up your comments, uh, when the time goes off. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Be free to share your mana'o on our agenda items and remember to treat others with respect and engage with the spirit of aloha. Uh, before we start on our first agenda item, we're gonna open in Pule. Uh, we have with us tonight Hanai Kaiulu, so I'm gonna ask one of their haumana, Keola Mahoi, to open us in Pule, Pulekako.
Dear most kind and graciously heavenly Father, we just come for you, um, today, Father Lord. Father Lord, I ask that you bring everybody here safely, take them home safely. Father Lord, I ask, I also ask that, um, you do better in our community. Um, fix the minds of our people, help our people. Um, Father Lord, I just wanna open this space for you to allow everybody to have an open mind, an open heart, and most, uh, most importantly, aloha. Um, and just me also say amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Gosh, doesn't that give you so much hope for the future right there, knowing that we're raising up great leaders here out of Nanakuli? So, uh, good job to our kumus, to our families, to our community for all supporting our haumana. So, we're gonna get started. Uh, first agenda is item is Honolulu Fire Department, so HFD, if you could go to the microphone and give your report. Aloha.
Good evening, gang. Firefighter Ryan Bercham from the Nanakuli Fire Station. Last month, we had one structured fire, one brush fire, six nuisance fires, and one activated alarm. A hundred-ten medical alarms, four vehicle collisions, and one hazardous material incident. The safety tip is wildfire awareness, prevention, and preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten hoi's landscapes, wildlife, and communities. Uh, with dry condition and everyday activities contributing to the increased risk, it's crucial to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildfires. So lighten the load, uh, reverse fuel or reduce fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard, cleaning your gutters, uh, clear, cool, and contain. Clear vegetation ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby. Uh, put it out cold before you walk away. Watch the spark. Uh, ensure machinery, chainsaws, weed trimmers, and recreational vehicles with operating spark arrestors are maintained regularly, and you can learn more at fire.honolulu.gov.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, board members, any questions for HFD? Questions for HFD, opening it up for the community, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department, please go up to the microphone and state your name clearly for the minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Edmund. Um, good evening, everybody. Honolulu Fire Department is preparing for Hiko's public safety power shut-off plan. Can you reveal what preparations are the Honolulu Fire Department putting in place? And navigating the section, uh, intersection of Nanakuli Avenue and, um, Ferentz Highway is a challenge, even right now when it's energized. So are you ready for a public shut-off event, and can you explain?
I'll make sure I get your question written down, but I'm gonna have to refer that to next month's meeting. Uh, I'll refer it to my admin.
Okay, very good. Uh, seeing no other questions, I apologize, let me see online, no other questions. Thank you very much Honolulu Fire Department, please be safe out there, and we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, up next, we have, uh, Honolulu Police Department, so I believe, oh, Sergeant Fumi, there you are online. Go ahead and give your report.
Aloha, board member Samantha, uh, board members and, uh, Sergeant Fumi. With, uh, HPD District Eight Community Policing, uh, giving the crime stats for April, uh, last month. Uh, motor vehicle thefts, there's fifty in the district, nine in our area. Burglaries, eighteen in the district, four in Nanakuli Maili. Uh, hundred-sixty-three thefts, uh, twenty-five in our area, forty unauthorized entries into motor vehicle, six in our area. Uh, total citations given, two-hundred-seventy-nine, total calls for service was six-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-two, of which in our area, there was one-thousand-eighty-five. Uh, I have a couple, uh, announcements. Uh, Depots Beach Park, there was a cleanup, uh, city cleanup on April twenty-fifth, and there was a cleanup, uh, there was a volunteer cleanup after that, uh, that, uh, council member Andrea Tupola put on over the weekend. Uh, you might have seen the orange fencing, it was, uh, beach park was closed off, uh, completely to, uh, service the cleanups, uh, over the weekend. Uh, between Depots Beach Park, which is across from the, uh, new Nanakuli Shopping Center, all the way to Mohihi, uh, the canal area, and then, uh, the following Monday, uh, the heavy equipment was brought in to, uh, fill in all the large, beach that housed, uh, some of the big encampments. So all that was done to allow the public to return to use all that area that was, uh, being kinda occupied by the, um, illegal encampment, yeah. So, our patrol officers are, um, holding the area, um, diligently and, um, enforcing the area to make sure, uh, the area is kept clear for the public to use. So, um, I just wanted to announce that. Uh, also, uh, we're gonna be putting the, um, we requested for some more signage in the, the parking lot area of the beach park. Uh, and also, uh, painting the curbs red so that, uh, there's no parking along the curb going into the beach park, uh, parking lot. Uh, so please, uh, utilize the mark parking stalls over there. They're also gonna stripe the parking stalls, uh, so it's more visible. And then also, uh, uh, it is graduation season, so just, uh, keep an eye out for your family and friends, uh. Don't drink and drive, um, and be cautious, uh, and, uh, you know, just and celebrate Uber or Lyft to the transportation safely instead of drinking and driving. That's all I have. Any questions, I can answer them now.
Very good. Thank you, Sergeant Fumi. Uh, we'll go to board members first. Board members, any questions for HPD? Uh, go ahead, uh, Board Member Corona.
Yes. Yes, um, I, I, I thought I heard you say photo citations. Was, was, was I correct in hearing that?
Uh, no, we, we're not doing that right now. No photo citations.
No photo citation. Okay, I thought I heard, I heard, sorry, when I heard you say citation, I thought I heard you say photo in front of that. Disunderstood, but okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Uh, commute, uh, board members, any questions? I'm gonna go to community. Community, any questions for HPD? Please go up to the microphone, state your name for the minutes, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Edmund. Um, thank you for your service, officer. Um, the Honolulu Fire, oh, sorry, the Honolulu Peace Department is preparing for Hiko's public safety power shut-off plan. Can you reveal what preparations the Honolulu, um, Peace Department has been putting in place? And can you, um, um, explain to me, um, you know, whenever a peace officer responds to a call, the risk injury and, um, possibly death. So in a power-out situation at night, visibility is worse than ever, right? So the risk of, um, injury and death is increased greatly. Is the department putting in the necessary protection items, uh, protection equipment for that rank-and-file officer to, so to he'll be safe out there or her? And can that officer, right, um, have comment to the department's plan, right? Should they, something occurs out there which is unforeseen and unplanned for, can they report that?
Okay, thank you for that question. Uh, so as far as the specific plan for the, uh, Hiko work, uh, I believe it was mentioned on Nanakuli Avenue. I don't have any specific information on the preparation for that, so I can take that back to my, uh, commanding officers and, uh,
Uh, I think you misunderstood my question.
Next one.
Yeah, my question is relating to the Hawaiian Electric Public Safety Power Shut-Off Plan. This is relating to the fires on Maui. They were ordered by legislation, you shall prepare a plan, you shall put a plan in action. And July first, forty days away, is that starting date. So any of you right now who got internet, look it up. Hiko, P S P S, I am not making this up.
Thank you, Edmund. Um, thank you very much. We are, uh, in discussion with Hiko to present at our neighborhood board in the next few months. So, um, HPD, if you don't have any response for that, uh, we can sure get a response from Hiko. Thank you, Edmund. Go ahead.
Aloha, blessings star, Delacour. Just need to make HPD correction on this. Houseless is not illegal. So if HPD can, um, correct herself on that, being houseless is not illegal. Also, another thing is, um, I wanted to bring up this issue. Has, have the Board of Health been contacted in regards to you guys cleaning up the beach when you guys cleaning it up because there are also, uh, sand fleas? Because once you guys clean that up, it'll spread out to the community. That has not been raised up issue, and it goes on up to our children when they go to other beaches and everything else. Now, so if you can look up leisane and those people that are living on the beaches, those are constant problems with that. So if you guys are just addressing them to get off there and have community go in, public use and everything else, what about the leisane? Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, as far as, uh, houseless, we don't, uh, enforce anything, uh, about being houseless, but there are park rules that, uh, the public has to follow as far as, uh, illegal camping, uh, having tents up, uh, having motor vehicles on the beach, uh, things like that. All the, um, park rules are posted on the signs, yeah, so that's what we enforce.
HRS, but some of these community people do not have.
Hold on, let's, let's let him respond. Let's let him respond. Go ahead, Sergeant Fumi.
Uh, as far as sand fleas, um, I'd have to bring that up to, uh, I guess Parks and Rec, they take care of the parks, uh, I can mention that to them and, uh, have them check for any infestation on the beach or anything like that.
Please do, because if you guys are cleaning up there, it'll also go on to your homes as well, the other communities and the people you allowing the public for use. But also for the correction on that, on the houseless portion. There's more into it and that, HRS, that's what the education part in HPD, but mo- majority of the people that there is facing mental health or other problems that they are facing, so, you know, saying that HRS this or law this or whatnot, you know, there may not be able to comply in that term, in that terminology that you guys all hold. So using the terminology is houseless is not illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, uh, state your name for the minutes.
Park of Font Road. I think Edmund Lozaxi, Sergeant, right, Sergeant? That if he was ready for what happened in Lahaina. Ladies and gentlemen, we are not ready. We are not ready. Sorry to say that. That's why Sergeant cannot answer you folks. We are not ready. People think we ready, we're not. You're on your own. You're on your own. I was told by the ones that got off the beach that if they go back, they're gonna get a citation, hundred dollars. Are we gonna go more down? We just stop right there. I feel for them. Get me wrong. We all feel for them. Well, I just pray. Stay humble, pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle. Sergeant Fumi, I don't know if you wanted to respond to that. If not, we can move to the next community member.
Uh, I can. Um, so as far as doing the cleanups, uh, we do offer, uh, shelter, uh, before we do any kind of, uh, cleanup and, um, ask them to remove their items. And if they, uh, are willing to accept, then we do, uh, we know beforehand where the openings are, so they are able to, but, uh, on most occasions, they decline. It's, uh, usually the same folks that are on the beach, uh, so, um, we do offer, uh, outreach, social services, uh, Kellogg West always comes with us when we do these cleanups. So, um, yeah. We don't just go out there and, um, you know, kick people off the beach, and most times they do return, yeah, so just wanted to explain that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Ed Warner, everybody's chair. Committee. Hey, Sergeant, you know, I wanted to thank you for coming out on the twenty-seventh. I mean, it's not one secret, it, when it comes around to April, we bringing it to Nanakuli. We've been doing it for, went on to eight years already, right? Uh, appreciate that, uh, HPD came down and support us traffic division with, um, Major Tanaka, our representatives was there too. Uh, Darris and, uh, City Councilwoman Andrea Tupola was there, mahalo for the support. Hey, um, you know, there were a lot of, um, grumbling. But hey, man, two-hundred-sixty-five days in a year, what is one day? Bring safety, to save lives. You know, Sergeant was there with us, you know, there were cars that got pulled on the side. They were pretty smashed, you know, there were kids, wasn't seatbelted in a car. I mean, that's, you know, a lot of guys grumble about the traffic. Well, you know, a couple of days after, they probably were stuck in a traffic coming home. You know, like I said, what is one day? I, I just wanna thank, um, you know, Mothers Against Strong Driving in Milwaukee, Hawaii, and a lot of that, uh, groups that came out and support us. You know, this is about, you know, it's graduation time coming. You know, I, I just sent to Millilani last night, and there were over two-hundred kids came out. You know, they graduated Sunday. But they asked me if I could come. I give my grand, Millilani High School. My grandson graduated from there. He played football. The whole football team came out and supported us yesterday, so I just appreciate, um, you know, Millilani for, you know, that I could take them out to them and then the support that, you know, we had out of down at Millilani High School and with the coaches. I have a lot of friends. Rodjok is one of my friends too, so. Just appreciate Sergeant that, you know, you stand there with us and bring safety, you know? Like the billboards on the freeway say, give a, give our grads a lay, not alcohol. You know, I stand there. I got nothing against alcohol. You wanna drink, that's up to you, right? The problem we get when you get behind a wheel, that's a major problem. If you're not killing yourself, you're killing innocent people. So that's why we stand here, and it ain't one secret, like I said. Make sure April, not gonna tell you when we're gonna do, but it's in April. So if, if, um, you know, once my signs come out, head out of here early, because it's coming. We're not gonna stop them. We're not gonna stop them. This going on until the day I'm not here, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Uncle, and thank you for continuing to advocate for safe drivers, being safe on the road, uh, so thank you very much. Uh, go ahead, state your name for the record.
Aloha, Janma Kepa, Wayanai Valley Homestead Community Association. Um, I just wanted to kinda touch basis on what Uncle was talking about with Hiko, um, and the mention of the fires in Lahaina. Um, so we at Wayanai Valley Homestead trying to be proactive. Um, for those of you that live in homesteads, the, uh, DHHL has gotten twenty million. They will be hosting a symposium, uh, regarding that. So what we're trying to do in our homestead is also identify areas of, um, concern that might have, um, fires, my home included, because I'm butted right up against the mountain. And so we're, um, partnering with DHHL and this symposium to kinda get as much information as we can so that we can be proactive in our homestead. Um, we don't, what we're trying not to do is, um, yeah, we want the help from whoever we can get the help from, but we also know we gotta help ourselves. You know, this is our community, so we gotta take care of our community. Uh, one of the things we talked about with, uh, Richard Hope at DHHL is he was saying, you know, we gotta do like a fire break. Um, one of the main things is maintenance of that fire break, and so a suggestion for that was to have or plant plants that are fire retardant. And so I just wanted to come up and say I'm gonna get information from Uncle, because he had mentioned the website that I wanted to check out regarding these, um, fires, but, yeah, it is, um, in talking to DHHL, we talked about Ma, and I on this side being the two homesteads that, um, will get affected by fires, so, yeah.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Um, just a reminder, we're still in Honolulu Police Department, so, uh, if anybody has any further questions for HPD, otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna let them go. Uh, anybody online, questions for HPD? Oh, do you have another question for HPD? Okay, go ahead. I apologize, please.
Um, Sergeant, I just wanted to let you guys know that I have nothing against HPD. It's just that we need to work together and there's a lot of important things coming up for like the safety, for the graduation, for our children and the community and stuff. So if we can focus on that instead of, I heard you saying about social services and what you guys offer to these people that are our houseless and everything, but there's also comes into play of other understanding of the higher HRS and the laws and so forth, so I wanted to put that out. Um, continue doing what you're doing in the safety-wise. If you as a police officer, be police officers, not be an attorney, not be a social worker or a social service worker or not, be HPD. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, bless. Do you have any more questions for HPD? Okay. Uh, Sergeant Fumi, thank you so much for being with us tonight. Uh, just praying protection over you folks as you guys go out there. Uh, please thank Corporal Pagan and your team for us, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Okay? Thank you. All right, so now, uh, we are in community concerns, so community, if you have concerns, uh, please go up to the microphone, uh, state your name for the record. Uh, online, if you have community's concerns, please raise your virtual hand. Just a reminder, uh, it is a two-minute limit, so the time will be up there on the screen. Oh, it's acting up. Uh, well, you'll hear the buzzer go off. Uh, so if you can, when you hear the buzzer go off, please wrap up. If not, I'll go ahead and, um, ask you to conclude your comments, but, uh, go ahead, community concerns, state your name.
I'm Zikyo Hinikono. My concern is unsafe traffic conditions at the Nanaikapono Elementary School entrance. Uh, you got near misses in, of cars, near misses of students crossing the street with one actual pedestrian accident involved right down the road from the school. Yeah. Lack of efficient and safe pickup procedures. I'm asking, can we place some supervision for traffic direct to crosswalk, at the crosswalk? Currently, no crossing guard, no security, or JPOs on Mono Avenue, crosswalk, school entrance. Yeah. Or needs, or we need speed bumps. Before reaching the school, the school's driveway on Mono Avenue or both sides of the school's entrance. Possible placement after bridge approaching Nanaikapono, Nanakuli Avenue, another few lots before the school. Before the driveway approaching, from Alia Clive, race crosswalks in school entrance would be, would be nice, you know, we gotta think about our cakey. That's our feature. And if you go there anytime in the morning or in the afternoon, you see you guys crossing back and forth, weaving on the road. That because everybody park on two sides. Instead of they park on one side, pick up the kids, they park on two sides. So now you get the kids just running across the street, no more supervision, no more security. I asked them, guys, wanna put somebody out there? They said, that's not jurisdiction. Yeah, but I told them, but that's just your kids. Kids go to your school. So, if you guys can help in any way, so we can get some safety.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. I'm gonna actually defer that to our, uh, Education Committee, Public Safety, Malia Augustine chairs those committees, so, uh, she can probably get in touch with the schools. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Okay, very good. Uh, please, uh, next community.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, distinguished guests, and members of the community. My name is Elizabeth Dixon, and I have a topic that, um, is very near and dear. As we are ending May, it is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And for me, mental health needs to be acknowledged every day, not just thirty-one days a year. I have a poem that I would like to read, that I do have the author's permission, but. If I killed myself tonight, the stars would still disappear, the sun would still come up, the earth would still rotate, life would go on without me. In twenty-twenty-three, over fifty thousand people in the United States committed suicide. According to the World Health Organization, one out of eight are living with mental illness. That is over nine-hundred-and-seventy million people worldwide. The most common are anxiety and depression. In closing, the piece that I read was written by someone who, if you saw them for the first time, you would not know that they were dealing with major depression, self-harm, which they were cutting, and had been hospitalized for caregiver burnout. That person that wrote that piece was me. I have now gone four-hundred-and-twenty-seven days since I last cut myself. And that is because I got help. And I know there are so many people, I have seen them up and down our coast, do not get the help that they need. So we really need to work on mental health awareness. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Edmund. I got a lot to say.
Edmund, sorry, one second.
I'm sorry.
But you still keep the a lot to say thing, but one, one moment. Board Member, uh, Augustine has a comment to me.
Hi, thank you for, um, sharing that. So there is, uh,
That wasn't allowed, sorry.
There is a helpline available if anyone should feel triggered by anything that is shared or feel the need to contact someone. Nine-eight-eight is the number to call if you are feeling, uh, that you are in a crisis and need to speak to someone in relation to suicide.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, very important. Okay, very good. I apologize, Edmund, please go up. Thank you so much.
Okay, evening, member one. Okay, evening, everyone. My name is Edmund. Okay, um, right now, Hiko is preparing a plan, right, for areas that are high risk to wildfires, right? And their plan is called the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Plan. This is no rolling out, um, rolling blackout. Rolling blackouts occur when the stress is on the grid and because of users, um, customers' use. This is relating to the wildfires of Maui, right? So areas that are prone to, um, windy, dry windy conditions will experience many shut-off, shut-off, power shut-off events. And I'm gonna give you an idea of what we're talking about, right? When area beginning over here at Kaipau Plan, moving west to Kea Beach Park, right? Makai all the way up to Nanakuli Valley, right? All of Nanakuli, all of Miley, up to Mikilua, right? Parkia Row, Fence Line, all of Wayanai, up to Piliuka and Wayanai Homestead, and of course, all of Makaha, huh, going up to Stanford Cars, $5 million subdivision. That's the area of cutoff we're gonna have. Yeah? And then they gotta expect all these lines before they re-energize. Because that's, they're not, they're not gonna re-energize until the red flag warning is lifted. Okay? So that is a big area. We need to prepare. Many of us may not be prepared. We may have relatives, others who depend on electrical devices, medical, um, electric-driven equipment, dialysis, all that. Is there any dialysis in Wayanai? I have no idea. And the thing is, there's questions. I ask, what, how long is a red flag warning? Only Hawaiian Electric can answer that. What are we talking about inspections? Are we talking, you know, an eight-hour day, 12-hour day? What is it? Right? There's no, again, they're not giving us answers. And July 1st, 40 days from now, because tonight is over. Starting tomorrow, 40 days to July 1st. Right? And Board Member mentioned, or Chair mentioned about, they're gonna come out to the Neighborhood Board. Yeah. Right? Just like the smart meter, right? Hey, they're gonna put an invoice in your bill, right? And they're gonna come and do what? One 10-minute max. Are you kidding me? We've got 37,000 people possibly on the Wayanai coast. If they get that invoice, you don't think they're gonna wanna pack this room to find out if my power gonna get cut off? So I requested a larger venue, very similar to the mayor's town hall. Eh? Request denied. Request denied. So again, reach out and prepare. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Edmund. Okay, uh, community, go ahead, state your name for the record.
Aloha, Jan Makepa, again. Um, now speaking as Pelikakena for the Wayanai Valley Homestead Community Association. Um, wanted to mahalo the board for entertaining our presence for the June meeting, which we will be presenting and letting the community know that, um, it's in regards to an economic development project. Um, because we're not presenting tonight, there's not too much information that I'll be sharing, but I just wanted to come on and just mahalo the board for, um, allowing us to be on the agenda for next month. And we look forward to, um, bringing this, the information about our community development to you folks.
Great, thank you very much, Jan. Yes, we look forward to hearing from you folks next month. Okay, go ahead, up to the microphone, thank you.
Aloha, my name is Lokhe Wakena Konan. I just kinda wanted to follow up about that safety issue on, uh, Mono Avenue. So you mentioned that, um, Malia, you would, you would talk with those at the school that might address the supervision issue, but the issue of having speed deterrents, because that's the first thorough street from avenue to avenue, that's a big problem. People don't know how to drive 20 miles an hour on any given day, at any given time. So that might be something that is an issue beyond the jurisdiction of the schools. I just want you to keep that in mind, be cognizant of that. Also, all the other schools in the valley, including First Road that doesn't have a school, has speed bumps or raised, um, crosswalks or, or, you know, some kind of notification that, hey, we're approaching a school, slow down. You know, perhaps we need to consider that on our avenue as well, Mono Ave. Um, so not only the school supervision, but also getting, if it's DHHL, if it's whoever it is, DOT, to get those speed bumps there. I don't wanna drive over speed bumps, but if that keeps our baby safe, then that's what I'm gonna have to put up with, right? So just keeping that in mind. Mahalo.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes. Sorry, one second, Uncle. Okay, yeah, and then also for those that have community concerns, um, please link up with us, make sure that we have your name and phone number, so we can follow up with you. We will follow up with the departments, whether it be DHHL or the schools, uh, but we wanna make sure that we have your contact number, so we can stay in touch with you folks, okay? Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanna make a, a, a community comment that the, uh, the, uh, the Neighborhood Board Transportation Committee is having a meeting tomorrow night at My Elite Community Park at 7:00 PM. Um, and that Mono Avenue is an, uh, agenda topic item to discuss further, to get more, um, um, feedback and, and information about it, so we can address it. So that is an agenda item on the Transportation Committee tomorrow night, My Elite Community Park, 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Is this the meeting that you'll be having, DTS? DOT, okay, okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you, Board Member Corona. Go ahead.
Yes, Mark Brigade. Pastor Zeke. I came before last year. They hope my grandchildren go with him. They made hummus. Doing the groundwork, calling the police folk come, okay, I'm there, but the, the sign of fast. From 2:30 in the morning to 9:40 cards. 140 cards. It's only in the morning now. So when the bus came to, I said, the school not on my road. You know, go Halekala on Nanakuli, Third Road High School. Made that bus backup all the way. You know how long took that bus for backup? It's not used to backing up. 15 miles? 15 miles of my road. Before I could count cards, now I cannot. They're doing a survey. Cause in there on the road, they have to bring the cameras out for that one. To do the survey. Need the rubber. With the rubber, that one counts speed. And car. You know, you guys see the rubbers on them. But Zeke, glad you're here tonight. We live in a valley. We live in a valley. Slow down. And then me, thank you.
Yes, please make it to the meeting. I have been to Uncle's property and they're flying it over there, so, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Aaron Connie Ayala. Um, I was wondering if the board made a decision about, uh, environmental whale? Uh, they came a couple months ago and that was Hawaiian homes out there that they secured for their commerce, business. And, um, they also did this in Hilo, I believe, in Eba Beach. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if this is, you know, is from another country, environmental whale, and I, I think this is Hawaiian homes. If they're gonna make concessions for Hawaiian homes on the beach to turn their little, I don't know, clubhouse into a commerce or what, a, a group session, whatever, um, ogo, fish, hangout. They gotta make concessions for Hawaiian homes. If someone wants to raise pigs out there or over here in their little property and their big property, or raise cows or horses. So I, I'm against commerce on Hawaiian homes. And then what? It's a write-off, it's a tax? Which Ma Kali, because you are empowering the community? How is New Zealand empowering our community, except for our resources? Another thing is, um, I'll save it for the water company.
Thank you, Aaron, thank you. Uh, go ahead. No? Go ahead, thank you.
Yes, again, head again. You know, when, when you talk about concerns, there's a lot of concerns. You know, what we need to do is get the head of DHHL here. When we talk about the homestead, the city doesn't maintain the homestead. Yeah. If you guys didn't watch the Mayor Blinjari came down for his town hall, I, I addressed it that. If DHHL could let the city maintain our valley, Hawaiian homestead, right? I don't know if they're listening. So we need to get the head of DHHL here, the director. So we, we, you know, we come here, we talk. We're getting tired to talk to the part. We like to talk to the head. That's why we're here. We like get things done. Hey, if, if we look, they get things done. I hate to say when something happen. Gotta take on life or get killed. Somebody get killed before we do anything. Come on, I've been around a long time. I know exactly what Pastor Zeke talking about. My grandmother live on Mono Avenue, home in the 30s. I know all about that. Remember? We never bring the school here. The school came here. Right? Right? The school came here. In convenience, we never bring the housing back here on Second Road. Right? Darren bring the house. When, when we talk about speed harms, raised crosswalks and this and that. You know, I talked to Kali about that. I just for years, I've been coming here, talking about the fire, talking about the DHHL. But seem like we talking to the butt, not the head. We gotta bring the head here. We gotta shake them up or vote them out, or when, when they're going to forget, um, go to the senate, go there and speak your voice. That's what we gotta do. You know, safety is the number one priority, should be in everything we do. Fire break, I've been bringing that up with DHHL. I've been bringing the Minavac, the Chinook helicopter, the military about carrying explosive to our homestead. I, I, what had her? For years. You know, maybe not this board was here, but maybe, um, you mean been here a long time? That's the concerns I bring. Even with the landfills, I bring that concern. I asked this board if you guys could please have somebody sit on the, uh, city landfill. We like know how long they're gonna stay here. Right? Act 72 was put out. I was a part of Act 72. So we need somebody to come out and, um, we like know how long they're gonna be in our community. Cause seems like we the true way to go. Nanakuli, everybody been there, Opa'la here. But that's the concern we need. We need to get Kali here.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I, I have invited Kali every single month since November. Um, yeah, so, uh, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Um, in the process of us being here, it, it almost seems like it's a facade, and it's always been. Uh, we are that screen, that smoke screen, as you say. So to reach the community on the level where we're making meetings, they're making meetings. So it's, it's almost like a beta blocker. They're blocking us, we're blocking them. But as you bring your concerns, it's all televised. So the, it's the money. Follow the money trail. So if we keep, if we keep it real, then yes, okay? Um, come to the community meetings like we have. Um, I have my Parks and Rec. I also have, um, Hawaiian Affairs. So come and state your opinion. We can write letters and we can send it legislation when it comes. And it's not gonna fall on deaf ears. We'll do our best to help. And that's about it we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is a chain and there is a process. So we, we will do our best. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, okay. Uh, any other community concerns, anybody online? Oh, go ahead.
Do I get a chance this time? Shelby Billner, AKA Pikachu Farrelly, if you don't know me. So thank y'all for, uh, coming here live. We're live streaming here now on Facebook. Uh, we got banned last time after the mayor's town hall, because what he said, even though we'd live stream on Lelo TV, and I was right there filming it all, he says, why don't you take care of it yourselves? Because the police can't handle it. And that's what we really want to address, because people said they're gonna go vigilante, you got Waikiki News, people with Vikings and Axis, because now it's all legal now. Now, all veterans, as we know, we're gonna protect ourselves, which is why I'm coming with a solution. I pitched this at the Wayanai Neighborhood Board with the Lieutenant Colonel there. I talked to this Lieutenant Colonel on the side. They have training in August. So if we wanna do a joint community event at Pokai Bay, some worth parking, where we actually do like fishing, um, you know, talking about the leases. You guys can learn about, we can do war games, we can do canoeing. Actually teach them how to fish, scale the fish, gut the fish, clean the fish, then you can have your little sushi. You know, we can do it the whole way and make the military sponsor it all. We can have all our local vendors and do it right, you know, because we're doing combined in the West Side, Nanakuli and Wayanai, not just A or B. But if we get all the military to sponsor it, you know, we're already talking to Okomura, we can get Flynn on the side, as long as they say, hey, okay, let's use the budget.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, any other community concerns? Go ahead, up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
My name is Rena. I represent a canoe club here in Nanakuli. We've been around since 1972. And you probably gonna have a concern about us coming up soon. Father's Day Regatta is right around the bend. So I know I attract a lot of traffic. This is where we can use the police for help us out. Because not only do I use the beach as well, but also get football going on at the same time. At the same time, I'm trying to bring my vaas in. Akonu, which is my canoe. And what I take care of. What I feel I represent, I represent the good of all of us. Teach every one of your Kikis, and they learn from the best. My coaches are the best, and I've learned from the best. I am, I guess, second generation, and we pass it down to third generation. I learned from my mother. My mother is Ian, Leilani, Kiolana, Ben Disen, and my dad, Henry Ryan Alfred, Ben Disen Junior, Honore's of Nanakuli. I never realized they met each other over here, because my mom's house no longer there. But I also know the Kiananas live around the bend. And that's my obligation to all of you guys. I promise I will teach them, as what I was taught. And good, true reason why Nanakuli, um, we have a canoe club over here is my parents wanted to take care of us, us guys. We Hawaiians, Honore's with the style. Some kind of, you know, some kind of head, but that's the reasons why she did what she did, you know, or the reason why he did what he did. Try to keep us all in line. But if we can work together, and that's what I'm trying to show to everybody, because you know, I'm on a verge of growing really big, you know? Communities are coming back. I've seen full circles. I've seen titas that used to paddle with on the beach with me. And it's a beautiful scene. Seeing to see, you know, and that's all attributed to all of you guys. Even to all of you guys who sitting on the board. I know him smiling, he pull my vaas too. So I will do my best to try and keep the orderly. But it's going on at the beach on Father's Day Regatta. And, uh, Judge Anne Barry is also working with me. If you guys do have any concerns, please, you guys know how to mean.
Thank you very much. What, what date is that?
It's gonna be June 15th. It's the weekend of June 14th to the 16th. I believe 16th is Father's Day. But everybody gonna be coming in from Friday, from 14th.
Okay. Thank you very much, yeah.
It's kinda crazy, but if we can work together, it'll work out.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, good. Awesome, thank you for that heads up, yes. Thank you. You very much.
I know we all get, we all like to do celebration. Nanakuli is my home. Wayanai is my home. Of course, I is my home. You're welcome to give us a call. We'd do our best to help you guys out. Can be reached at leerepetanutra at gmail dot com. We can help you guys out if you guys have family celebrations you guys wanna do. That's the best way you can get in touch with us, because between myself and my board, we do review it on a daily basis. So we'll reach out to you guys, put a contact number, and we'll get back to you, okay?
Very good, thank you. Thank you for all that you're doing in the community. We appreciate you. Mahalo, mahalo. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Kaku. My name is Georgiana Navarro from Wayanai Valley Homestead. Um, listening to everyone's concern here, did you know that you have Nanaikapono Hawaiian Civic Club? All of your concerns that you are voicing get together. You not need to be a member, but I can see that many of, of us is concerned. I am, uh, the Pelikakena for Makaha Hawaiian Civic Club. I sit on the Oahu Council of the Civic Club. Your voice is very important. So do realize that you do have in this moku, four Hawaiian civic clubs. So each of, every one of you So each of, every one of you, it doesn't matter who you join. The thing is, we all together. Don't let this ahupuaa separate us. Our moku is very important to our Hawaiian civic club. So I strongly suggest that you, um, make the time. You can go on to the internet and find out about the civic clubs here. Because it's very important that your voice is heard. And the given experience was, um, in twenty sixteen, real quick, I believe it was. We had our Nanakuli, um, kids that don't go in the classes, but we approached them. They had a voice. It was a voice of, I believe, uh, Kumoo Piper, you remember that? We took seventeen of the students to our convention in Washington. They had a standing ovation because of what they believed in. Nanakuli always had water. We always need water. So it wasn't about us, it was about their voices. We put them in front of the Water Board Commission. Down with them. They had questions. Do you know that when they had their time at the convention, they had their own room? That, that room was filled. But I just wanted to make, uh, you know, note of that. Each and every one of you joining a Hawaiian civic club, you know, you don't have to be Hawaiian. But the only thing with this is that you cannot vote, yeah? But we, we listen to everybody. I just thought I'd share that.
Thank you, thank you, Auntie Virgin. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, any other community members, uh, seeing none in the room, no hands online? And move on to, uh, presentations. Uh, so on the agenda, we do have the Twenty Twenty Four Christmas on the App presentation. Um, however, we're gonna be moving that to our June agenda. So, uh, coming up first in our presentation is Scrappers Union, Scrapus Union nine six seven nine two. Uh, that's pathetic. Uh, presentation who was recently, uh, recognized, uh, by the Honolulu City Council last week. Uh, they've been doing great things in the community, uh, and I'll let them go ahead and share, uh, what they're gonna be presenting tonight. Go ahead.
Um, aloha, my Kako. Um, I'm one of the board members of Scrappers Union. Um, we would first like to thank, um, the board for inviting us here to talk about all of what we do.
Aloha Kako, I'm Jeremiah Magalones. I'm a sophomore at Nanakuli High School. I'm also one of the student lead of Scrappers Union. Um, yeah, just thank you for inviting us here and having us share our mana'o.
Aloha Kako, my name is Kanoa Nani Torres. I am also a sophomore at Nanakuli High. Um, and I'm like their assistant to the Scrappers Union and thank you for having us.
Aloha Kako, my name is Puma Hana and I'm a freshman at Nanakuli. And I'm, I'm new to the Scrappers Union, but I'm learning really quickly. And I would also like to say thank you for having us here.
Um, just an overview of what we do. Um, we're based at Nanakuli High School. Uh, we're trying to eliminate plastic waste into our ina, into land, in our landfills. Um, cardboard is one. Cardboard is a main greenhouse gas problem, right? When PVT burns it, green house. Um, we also turn your recycled cardboard into pots with sheet mulch, um, and confetti. Um, yeah.
Yeah. We also use the shredded cardboard and there's like a, it's like a big cycle, big cycle that we have with our local farmers and our local community. So like we, we work with the community and the farmers to help the, the waste management of cardboard. So our community brings in cardboard, we shred it and we give it to the farmers. Because, and they use it for many different varieties of things. They use it for sheet mulching, like you said. Um, they use it for weed, weed suppression and water, water retention. So it's like a big cycle, um, somebody else can add it.
So to touch bases on what he's practically saying is the different type of things that we use our shredded cardboard with is packaging, sheet mulching, planting pots and rabbit beds, but, which we also do, um, oil change boxes. That was like one of the recent things that we did for our Kiki Co product that we won second place for, yeah? Um, and then she'll touch bases on what she had. And this is one of the plastics that is used very commonly and this isn't really good for our ina because it won't ever go away. It'll still stay in the environment and that's not good for our food or for, for the things that we consume. Instead, we wanna use cardboard because cardboard is easy to dispose of and it will actually go away unlike this plastic that will stay here forever.
Um, so every first Saturday of each month at Nanakuli High School from eight to eleven thirty, we do have a cardboard shred day, a community cardboard shred day. So you guys are able to come up to Nanakuli High School, drop off guys cardboard in returns. We'll give you fresh produce or a CSA box, whatever we ask, um, our different farmers. Um, with that being said, we also won two winnings. One of them, twenty-five thousand, our first winning from American Savings. Um, second round, we won fifteen thousand, um, also from American Saving during the Kiki Co contest. We also create, um, oil change boxes. And our next project for next year, we are looking at, um, sleeping bag for our houseless people. Mahalo.
Very good, very impressive. Let's give them a round of applause. Oh, I.
I just wanted to add on, like, I didn't think of coming up during like the community concerns, but one of my community concerns was about like, I heard, I heard a lot of talk about wildfires and fire breaks out, breaking out. And there are like, there are solutions that us as the community can do that we don't really realize. Um, like, one of the main things is we could, we could as a community work together in planting natives to our community. Because the majority of our native plants, our native Hawaiian plants are mostly full of moisture. We don't have a lot of like dry acting plants. So if we plant native plants in our community, it might be a less chancing risk of breaking out wildfires.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, wait, uh, stay up there. Okay. Thank you, guys. Great presentation. So now we're gonna open up for questions, okay? So you guys just stay here. Board Member Corona and Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much. And I never heard of you guys until I saw on the agenda. And then I obviously I immediately started searching online. I saw you guys got another grant or something for a thousand or something like that. It was on, I think I saw your guys' stuff on Stuff, but congratulations on that. But I was really interested as, as the, the planting, uh, container, uh, pot, I guess. Um, and I saw that you could, you know, just, you just put it in your video. It's like you just put it in the ground and just leave it, you know? So you don't have to worry about the plastic one. So I guess my question is, is I don't understand, but is it marketable? So do you, are you, are you able from the DOE aspect of it, able to market this and, and market it out in the community? The reason why I'm asking is because I sit back and look at like Home Depot and Lowe's and those guys where they have their plants and they're always in the plastic stuff. This would seem, it'd be something that would be advantageous that the businesses would be able to incorporate something like this, uh, going forward. I wasn't sure if, um, if from the DOE aspect, because it's a DOE sponsored type program, I guess. I'm not sure if it is or not, or if it's a separate from the DOE or not, but is it, is it, is it marketable to where you're able to market it?
I can answer that. Aloha Kako, I am Kumoo Piper and I, um, take care of this group. I lead this group. I'm so blessed to be there, Kumoo. Um, as part of the, your question, cardboard is ina. Yeah, ina needs to be returned to ina. Heali ika ina, hekawa kekanaka. The ina is a person. We don't sell our person. We don't sell our people. So we just trade. We recycle. That's the ahupuaa system. That system was a working system before, right? We're not recreating the wheel. It was already there. So the students don't sell their pots and they don't sell their shredded, um, mulch. We trade it. Um, so that's, that's the difference. Um, there is a component in the education system which is called the Personal Transition Plan, their PTP, where students need to earn community service hours. So that is where they tie into my project, where they can be, um, you know, a little bit more intentional with their time with community service. And it, it came out of COVID when everything was shut down. There was no, um, opportunities for students to get community service hours. So, um, came twenty twenty-one, we created the project and the program. So they understand that the land is chief. We are merely its servants. So we don't sell, we don't sell ina, we don't sell papahano moku to somebody else. We exchange for food. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you very much. Uh, Board Member, oh, Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you for what you've done, um, as far as engaging with this project. And as far as soliciting for the funding and the contest, et cetera, so that you have been rewarded for your efforts. Um, I appreciate your presentation and your mana'o, what you shared with us. Uh, you said it on Saturday, first Saturdays, you accept the boards, the cardboards, et cetera, that you shred them on the first Saturdays?
Yes, so.
Where at Nanakuli High, in the parking lot?
Yes, a building parking.
Okay. And then you said you shred them. Um, would you, do you shred them so that maybe if that person wants to take it back home for potting soil? Or you shred them and then you dispose them or both?
So if you come on Saturday, um, the beginning of every month, we'll normally ask you if you wanna take this home with you or if you wanna keep it at the school with us. And then normally if you want it to, if you want us to put it back in your car shredded, we will most likely do that.
Wonderful. And then, um, you mentioned about the fire, uh, break, um, or fire prevention efforts. DHHL is having a, a fire sympo, um, response plan symposium on August twenty-third, um, at the airport from nine thirty to four. I think all of you should go there and you'd be a great representation for Y-Nine Moku. And you'd be part of it as far as share your mana'o. Maybe we can connect you with DHHL so that you can be part of it and share what you're doing in our community. But in addition, some of the mana'o that you would like to impose on the participants of the symposium to take into consideration. Since you live and you thrive in Y-Nine Moku.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Just a suggestion, if you guys may be interested.
I'll speak over with my Kumoo and thank you to the board members. And I just wanna, I just wanna add on to about how Kumoo was telling, um, Board Member Corona, um, how we teach people. We actually bought a shredder for all of the schools on the West Side. And that shredder is about twenty-five hundred dollars. That's what, that's what we did with our awards that, um, he was talking about, Kiola. We actually. So, yeah, we actually didn't like keep the money for ourselves. We actually bought shredders for the, the schools on the West Side. And then how he was, how she was saying about we teach people, we go out and we do workshops and we give the shredders to the schools. We actually teach them how to use it and what we do with it. We also have, we also have given, um, a shredder to the deaf and blind school out in town, yeah. But, yeah, so just to add on what you're saying, how we teach, we actually go out and we go to workshops and work in the community. And we teach, we literally teach them how to work it, how to make it, all the benefits on it. And, yeah. And to add on what Kiolo was saying about how if we take the cardboard or we give it to them, if they do, do have the choice of leaving it with us, our local farmers, we actually give the shredded cardboard to them. In return, we get the fresh produce from the farms that we give to the community that brings into the cardboard. Yeah.
That's awesome. One last question. Do you guys have YouTube, do you guys do videos so that you post on YouTube or Facebook? Because we have a website, a Facebook website for our neighborhood board. It'd be wonderful to put some of the information.
Yes, we, um, my Kumoo is actually in charge of that. She has her own Instagram, Instagram account is NHIS O'Lelo Hawaii. And there's another Instagram account named Hanai Kayaula. And she has all her updates and videos and everything on top of there.
Wonderful. Continue your work, your great work. Mahalo, Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, Board Members, any other questions? If not, I'll go to Community. Uh, Board Member Augustine?
Thank you so much for sharing. It's an inspiration for you folks to be within our community. If anyone in the community wanted to get involved as far as, um, meeting with you folks, I know you folks are busy on the Saturdays, but do you guys have a regular meeting that community could attend to be involved?
Yeah, it's gonna be summer soon, so everybody's taking a break right now. Um, so the summers, we're gonna be off and then we're gonna start up again, um, during the school year, which would be September. So it is ten months, so September to May is our, our program.
Okay, very good. And then, uh, Board Member Io?
My Io? No. So, so in reality, then, uh, Kubu, it's a barter system. What you make and what you get from the land, the ina, you give it back to the people.
Yeah, it's called kuliana.
Kuliana, okay. So in doing that, you're malama the ina. So you malama the people that live on the ina. So I would think the barter system, because somebody gonna give you something for what you've done so that you can get something in return, whether they give you money or goods, that's the barter system that we're gonna have. That's what the Howlins call it, yeah? Or we call it kuliana.
Kuliana, yeah.
So it's having this concept shared with our, our friends to tell them that the biggest land they got, they're not even doing that one. We're just doing this on our own island, one island, one little speck in the ocean. But the ocean that surrounds this island is what we gotta take care also. And that's what Sister brought up, yeah? Leward guy. So I'm glad, I'm seriously, I get interiorized already, that I live here on this island or these islands. And I'm proud of those students over there. That what you're doing now, we should have done this how many years ago, Kumoo? Quite a while. We haven't done that, but now we catching up now. And I'm very proud, very proud. I wanna congratulate all of you, seriously. And whatever video you made, share it with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member Io. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for Community for questions. Please go ahead to the microphone. Oh.
Mahalo, look here, Wakina Kona again. I wanna address you guys. You guys are not gonna be in session until September again. Wa Kaiaula is a program that we run through the University of Wa, you, you know me, pals in places. Apply. We still have openings, but there is much work that you guys can do, much learning that you guys can have, experiences out in the ina. Sorry for my back being to you guys, but we have five pathways. Wa, Kai, that's one. Land use policies, um, fire mitigation, I can't, ola pono, and I forget the fifth one. But what you guys talked about is right in line with that. If you guys are interested, I would, um, admonish you guys, sign up. I can get, um, information to Kumoo over here on how to do it. We have openings right now and we would love to have you because you guys are the guys of our future. We need you for our, for our community to thrive, continue to thrive, and the kuliana to continue on. Yeah, so I don't know if this is the time, but you guys are here. Please, I'm gonna send to you Kumoo, okay?
Very good. Mahalo, thank you very much. Go ahead, up to the microphone. Thank you.
Just wanna say awesome job, what you guys are doing. Make me proud to be a hawk, that's a eighty-five. Um, but I wanted to ask, um, do partnerships with, um, not only outside companies like Servpul because they have a lot of appliance cardboard, but more so, um, our businesses out here, Color Time, Rent the Center, Y-Nine Store. I know you folks don't take, um, yeah, shiny and printed materials, but, um, maybe these businesses would be willing to sort through and that might be a good partnership or something like that. Mahalo.
Um, so to regarding your question, um, we actually do collect from Y-Nine Vet, Y-Nine Hardware, John Reposa. On S.K. Salon.
So we are starting to go into the businesses and try to collect all their cardboard, um, as we speak.
So these are the businesses that don't have the recycling bin, yeah? Cause the recycling bin costs money. So they don't have the recycling bin, so they call us and we pick it up. That's the five-year plan, yeah? To have a community composting hub in our, in our west side, right? We creating green jobs, we creating jobs for these guys too. I need a truck, gang. I need a truck so I can go around and pick up this cardboard. Cause right now I pick them all up on the weekends after school. But we do work with the businesses that don't have the recycling, um, containers because they wanna do their part too. They wanna do their part, because if not, it goes into the landfill. And that's what we're trying to eliminate, right?
Very good, thank you very much. Go ahead, up to the microphone, thank you.
Hello, I hear it again. Um, wanna thank you guys. It's what I stand for. I mean, malama the aina, right? When, when we get our stuffs being transported to our, our homestead, dumping in a landfill, hey, look how the Japanese get rid of their rubbish. You know, we've been poisoning our lands. When the first landfill came into Nanakuli, man, I just, you know, I'm a, I'm like too, of the Hawks and of Lyric Kai Kanu Club. I've been, I've patterned with them in the seventies too, under their dad, right? The brothers. But what, what I try to say is, is malama the aina recycle, that's what it's all about. You know, you look at H Power, you look at AES, AES is out here. How many of you guys that live in Nanakuli realize when get corner wind? You know what corner wind is? And I, I had this from a big island where, where my family live. When get corner winds, it's on amen. It's no good, it's no good. We had the corner winds, we got the power plants blowing the opala into, we got the refineries, we get, you know, it's all these no good things that flow into our community. I talked with, um, Senator Miley Simo Bukura years ago and I don't worry about that. Hey, let's put up monitors in Nanakuli. Let's put them up alongside the landfills. You know, let's be transparent. This is a native community. We one of the biggest Hawaiian homesteaders in the world. If you take us from Nanakuli to Makua, we the biggest. Ain't nobody bigger than us. Why we gotta, you know, take all this opala and inhale them? That, that's terrible. You know, I, I just thank you guys for what you guys doing. You know, we malama the aina, that's all we're all about. We're not about parents, you know, Alex said, what Alex said in our community. Cause they've been doing them for all these years. They really been doing them. We, it's time we wake up. It's time our board to address our concerns, please, you know? Find one, um, resolution for this landfill. I hate to say it, we shut down Waimea Manalo right now, we, we done. Only gonna get one landfill. I don't know need to point you guys where that landfill gonna be. That's gonna be the bottom line, you know? I don't know if the mayor kicking a can down a bucket, but I mean, it takes five to eight years to get another landfill going. He's probably not gonna be in office. So we just gonna, I don't know. Kick the bucket down there, for the 55 gallon drum. But you know, I just appreciate you guys. Thank you guys, well. I'm a proud hawk too. Ziki's a winner.
I'm a sea rider. But I'm a sea rider, sorry, I just gotta let that know. But I did paddle, I did paddle for Lyric Kai. Um, I just want them to talk about their name and their, um, their, their writing on their shirt and why it's important, yeah? I do teach Hawaiian language. I teach Olelo Hawaii at Nanakuli High School. I've been a teacher on the west side for 25 years now. And I don't teach agriculture, I don't teach science, but I teach kuleana, yeah? So cultural connection is addiction prevention, yeah? Cultural connection is suicide prevention. I get these kids picking up food waste from the cafeteria. I get these kids picking up cardboard from the community. Culturally connect our, our people, our, our students, our homana, yeah? And then they're gonna, they're gonna explain their shirt.
Okay, the name Scrappers Union, um, the stereotype, yeah? The stereotype in our community, yeah? Nowadays, it's all Nanakuli and Waimea, they love to fight everybody's. They love, love, love to fight, yeah? But in our sense, yeah, yeah, we like scrap. Come, give, give me your, um, food waste. Give me your cardboard. We scrap, we scrap those, we not scrap physically. So that's the meaning of the front, the back.
And the back of the shirt is, um, so koko means to, um, to help. And kuleana is our responsibility and Kai'ulu is our community. So practically, the shirt is just saying that it's our responsibility to take care of our community.
And then, we'd just like, we'd just like to gift this to the board. But first little explanation, um, the reason why we gift this plant is because this is actually a kupu kupu plant. And kupu kupu means to grow and spread throughout any tarnation. Um, and that's what we want to do with our organization. It's we want to spread and just be as wide as we can. So this is why we always, um, gift this plant is in particular. And yeah.
Beautiful, that was beautiful. Thank you so much, uh, community, anybody last? Oh, go ahead, please, to the microphone, please.
Hi, I'm Les. Speaking of Mr. Carl Raitpa, Kingdom of Waimea. Had you guys in IG for a while. Been following and I just wanna tell you guys how proud I am. And I thank you.
Um, there, there, one more thing, I know, one more thing. They just, this is just such an amazing group of students, that's why. Amazing things. They actually started their project this semester in Hilo Hawaii. So there's a Scrappers Union cohort at two schools now. They have cardboard shredders at their schools. So you know, we wanna try and go from macro to micro because you know, we kinda get everybody doing it, but we can go micro in small communities, small schools. We can do what we can do. So, um, why not the schools? Because they have choke cardboard and choke, um, newspaper. And I'll speak last so they would do, they kinda part put a ghi now that they've been talking for so long. Three years of doing this and they just getting better, yeah? We have to allow for opportunity for them to speak. So thank you for having them, um, practice their, their presentation skills. But they did bring some supplies. Um, maybe later on in the corner, if you guys wanna learn how to make a pot, um, they're, they'll be glad to help you guys. Um, teach you guys how to make a pot and you can take home a planting pot tonight. Mahalo.
Very good, thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Thank you, that was beautiful, thank you so much. Yes, please follow them on Instagram. We'll go ahead and, uh, get a video from them to upload it to our, um, Google Drive so we can have that in there. Okay, very good, awesome. All right. Okay, moving on, uh, to BiHawai'i. We have Sylvia Hasi with us and she's going to be sharing about her program. Uh, so it kind of really falls in line with what, uh, Scrappers Union is also doing. So we can collaborate a lot of these projects and do them in our backyard. So go ahead Sylvia, thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you Chair and thank you for the neighborhood board and for those here. If you haven't picked up, there's a hard copy of the presentation. And for those online, um, I'm Sylvia Hasi. I'm the BiHawai'i Executive Director and the Project Coordinator for the Le Po Ina Ole Project. The BiHawai'i is a nonprofit. It started with Auntie Betty Jenkins and her four Bs of believe, become, belong, and to actualize that. Um, those of you who may know Auntie Betty, she's a longtime educator, Hawaiian Civic Club, Papa Ololo Kahii, Kupuna, and just an all-around inspiring educator. And so BiHawai'i was fortunate enough to receive a Administration for Native American Grant in 2022. And the project is very simple. It's to grow more lei flower plants. Um, many of you get your plants, uh, your flowers right out of your garden or people go down to Chinatown. But our Chinatown and, and just, we know there's not enough lei flowers. There's a proliferation of flowers coming in from outside of not only Hawaii but the US. And nothing wrong with that, except these are not our flowers. These are not our pika'ke, our pakalana, our puakeneke, our ilima. These are not our flowers. And we know that in time, if we don't grow more flowers, we're not gonna have lei as we want to and value. So the project is very simple. Um, first of, first and foremost, we wanna say right up front, the project keeps none of the production. We looking for growers. It can be your tutu, it can be your Hawaiian Civic Club, it can be your homestead. In fact, Nanakuli High and Intermediate kicked off their Le Po Ina Ole Project on April 20th in the, in that community. And they decided they were gonna plant these plants. The, here, tea leaf here, pakalana on the gate. So the design of the project is really up to you, the grower. And that's all it is. It's super simple, anybody can be a part of it. You just have to take the initial survey on the back. That will come to me and then you let us know, any kind of lei flower plants. We also are looking to strengthen what we call complementary lei flower plants. Tea leaf, palapalae, lawae. These are complementary plants that we also want to support. So take the interest survey, it comes to us, me. I'll go into the Survey Monkey and then contact you as to what that looks like. So again, it could be five pika'ke plants. It could be help source, you know, some pakalana. It could be whatever. It could be even what you have, like your grandma used to grow this one specific ilima. Cannot find them. We can help find that or you can be our test site, right? So we have a propagation farm in Waimea and he is growing pika'ke, tea, um, crownflower, purple and white, um, plumeria. We have a collaborative agreement with the College of Tropical Ag, that urban garden, the, in Pearl City, that garden in the middle of the freeway. That's a, um, Citar site. And so we have a collaborative agreement to do research trials there. They have a plumeria garden. They have the greenhouse that's growing virus-free tea leaf. Um, they have an upper garden that they just did palapalae trials. And so this project is just trying to get more people to grow lei flowers. And again, you keep the production. You wanna sell it to Chinatown, you wanna keep it for graduation? You wanna send it to the mainland or just keep for your family? All of it is okay. Yeah? Any questions?
Okay, very good, thank you very much Sylvia. Uh, we'll go to board. Board members, any questions for Sylvia? Uh, go ahead, board member Myers and then board member Tector.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Mahalo for your presentation. I went on your website and saw some of the information. Um, I read this when I got here. I have some questions, so. So I understand you're, you're trying to promote for growers. So, and you're gonna create a data bank of the growers? So that you can connect them to the local families or, or is it to the Mauna Kea, Chinatown growers or the airport? Or Watanabe Floral?
Yep, so at the end of the day, the Na Le Po Ina Ole Coalition is the coalition that we want to have be a collaborative coalition versus a competitive coalition. You know, so for example, tomorrow, actually, the project is gonna go out to the Waimea Manalo Citar Station and with the Honolulu Botanical Garden, go pick plumeria. And to pick plumeria so that on Friday, they can start streaming for Memorial Day. So that's an example of a collaborative effort that we wanna support. And you know, as part of that. And the coalition should survive the project. So when the project money run, you know, runs out, it runs out, but the coalition and the network should continue, regardless of whether the project money runs out because that's a practice that we value as a community.
Okay, so, cause I'm trying to understand the long-term. I understand that the intention, you wanna perpetuate our local flowers, uh, to be grown here in Hawaii and then also to be sold to Hawaii first and then the greater, instead of bringing from mainland to here?
So the, the objective is to have it grown locally and then the growers decide what happens. You wanna keep it for your family, you wanna use it for commercial. Um, we have some growers on Molokai that want all the elementary schools to grow for Meide, right? Meide is the same time for all the schools and there's always a shortage. So they wanna think about elementary schools growing their own lei flowers so that when Meide comes, they have that whole experience. And you know, with elementary schools, you have the whole crownflower butterfly action kind of stuff as well as the opportunity for the lei as well as the cultural part of Queen Liliokalani, the crownflower and that, that effort. So it's trying to haku all of those elements together.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, uh, after your, if say running, runs out of funding, are you gonna leave your network information on a website? Or are you planning on doing YouTube videos or Facebook to keep it into perpetuity? To take the mana'o that was gathered from this and then bring it, you know, put it somewhere for archiving or for referral?
Yep.
Uh, so that's one question. And because I, and, and it came, and that's my last question. And it came because we had, um, one of the flyers said in me, and I could understand, so a lei for Memorial Day, right? So you're saying, um, so there look, is the city sponsored?
Mm-hmm.
So are you trying to connect, like say if all these, you promote all these families to grow their, their flowers? Are you trying to connect a database so that city can go, okay, let me reach out to these farmers locally and to plan for their Memorial Day to cover 3,000? I think it was 38,000 graves, to put lei's on 38,000 graves.
So the intention of the coalition would be that there are needs that come up. So Meide is a great, I mean, uh, Meide is certainly one example. Memorial Day is another example. So as we know, these are coming up, let's grow, let's anticipate that. And as a community, let's address that need. Um, so you have, you know, Punch Bowl, Kani Ohe Veterans is doing something. You have on the neighbor islands, all the veterans. So as a state, collectively, we're preparing and for that. And so one of the reasons we really wanna connect with the city is to take advantage of the botanical garden system that the city has, right? On Oahu alone is five of those botanical gardens. Can you grow more lei flowers in our botanical gardens? Can you cultivate a particular variety that we're having a hard time seeing? Can we be as a community, figure out this kind of, um, need for our community? Yeah.
Mahalo.
Very good, thank you very much. Board member Tector?
Hey, thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm five generation of that product, um, sowing lei's. And through the years, we've lost certain plants because of what that young man said, that, um, and other people as far as corner winds, our soil depletes. And then hence Nanakuli always dry. So aside of what, um, Earth Day, they give out trees, you know, with the hope that it replenishes oxygen. So if you give me a plant, Miley, I already know it's not gonna grow here because it's too dry. You already have data on plants that would grow here in Nanakuli versus getting to the stage where we'll put the cardboard on the soil to kind of replenish our moisture.
So one of the philosophies of the project is to be grower focused. So I don't know that and I'm pretty sure the Department of Agriculture doesn't know that. But our growers do. And our longtime family growers, five-generation growers, they know. They know what we'll grow, they know how to grow it. And it's that kinda ekid that the project wants to capture. And so it goes to, uh, Jermaine, that's a great question. Our policy around community gather data is when the community gives the project the data, that's their data. If you want us to share it, put it on the website, whatever, whatever, you can give us permission, but the data is collected for the project. And even though the project has to do federal reporting, that data is, you submit data that you understand will go to, um, federal reporting. But otherwise, the data that we're collecting is through what's called photo, photo. But otherwise, the data that we're collecting is through what's called photo stories. Farmers are busy, growers are busy. So the prompt, one of the first prompts is, why is lei important? Okay, take a picture. We're going to text you the link. Take a picture, upload it to the Survey Monkey and that's the collection. To the question, if we give you plants and they all die, that's data to us. And it's not like, okay, you cannot get any more plants. It's like, no, tell us what you did or didn't do because that's data. Okay, we give you some more plants. Or maybe it's not this. We're going to give you something else because you want to try something else. So the project is not about, you know, it's about honoring the grower experience, knowledge. And more importantly, we know that there's culture-based practices that are embedded in those grower strategies. There's families, there's history, there's legacy, there's moolelo that come. We all have the family member who you don't want them to mix poi because they get sour hand. Well, there are growers. We have had growers who will tell us, this uncle will not plant, but he can plant the chila pepper, but he cannot plant the flowers, right? And that comes from grower experience. We have growers who tell us, you pick this way, not this way. Grower experience. So that's what the project wants to acknowledge value and preserve.
Very good, thank you very much. Board members, any other questions? If not, I'm going to open it up to community, okay? Community, please go to the microphone if you have a question for Sylvia. Go ahead, just state your name.
Aloha Sylvia. Again, John Makepa from Waianae Valley Homestead. I would love to partnership with you folks. So our homestead, we've had plans and we've talked about starting a kupuna sustainable garden. And one of the things that we look at is maybe doing like an Arbor Day giveaway for our residents. It's always been my dream to want to provide at least one plant that's food, one plant that's medicine, and then now adding one plant that's a flower. So I think that that would be something great to do for our homestead. And, you know, the whole process of planting flowers. So I don't have a green thumb, my dad did. And then I found out, well, maybe I do because my pakalanas are going crazy. And so is my linepup. But I also think that having more information about native flowers might help too, especially in our homestead, being that we are all Kanaka in our homestead. It'd be a good idea for our sustainable garden to have Kanaka flowers as well as those that are not native. So I will definitely go to that Survey Monkey and I appreciate the connection for our flower communities.
Great, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's beautiful. I got that type. Yeah, I grow that type. You know, that's so awesome. I think everybody that home on Homestead should at least plant some plants, you know. You pass, if you guys know where I live, I get hinahinas that is 10, 12 feet long. In the back, I get some that is 15 feet long. I get quinoa trees, I get mango trees, I get lawa'i, I get keneke. You pass my house, you're going to see them. I think back in the days, I had on green thumb because I was one of the best marijuana growers. They were fine. Hey, so you know I get on green thumb. You know, so, you know, my coconut trees right now are getting eaten up by the beetles, you know. We, you know, overwatering and, you know. And I love, I'm a grower. I love, I love my plants. And if you pass my house, you see what I get in my yard, you know. You know, and it takes, you know, I thank God for our kupuna. My dad, my mom, my grandma. That's how we, you know, we learn by how they did to grow plumaras. I got some beautiful plumaras. And I got the real duck small yellow, I get miniature plumaras. But, you know, what I had to say is, hey, we got a ma'amao yard. I'm on Homestead. My brothers and sisters are all on Homestead. You know, if I pass the house and I see the yard and I'm looking, oh, buddy, we eat a brok. You know, more gas for your ma'amao, but, you know, it's just the way we was raised. I think if we can share that mana'o with everybody, it would be so great. But so, without any questions, no concerns. I guess I'm going to be heading out. I got some stuff I got to take care of in the morning. But may you guys have a beautiful night and be safe on the road. Itu me'da, wihoo, and I'll see you guys next month.
Aloha, Ko. Thank you so much. Be safe. Thank you for all you do for us. Aloha, aloha. All right, Board Member Augustine?
Can you explain your timeline as well? How long it's going to be for a participant in your program? And then at the end or the distribution process, if you folks are still going to be sharing any of the plants afterwards?
So the project itself is to September 29th, 2025. But as we said, we want the coalition to continue. So the process, you know, outlined here, once you raise your hand and say, me, I'm interested, I'll contact you and we'll talk story. If you have, you know, a commercial site or if it's grandma's backyard or wherever your growing is occurring, if you have no growing, whatever that may be. And then what we'll do is a site visit. So Nanakuli High, we came with Kumu Kamuala. We came to the site visit. He showed us all that's there. He showed us what they wanted to plant. And that's the phase we call the design phase. The design phase is what makes sense for you as a grower to design. And once you get past the design phase, then, you know, we move to the implementation phase. And then we'll know what kind of plants you want, when you want them. When do we source them? Are you having? We have one grower in Kone Ohe. They are planning a community day on June 3rd. So we're trying to source all their plants so that the community comes and helps them plant their lei plants. So they gave us a whole list of puakeneke, pakalana, you know, mia, mia, mia. There, they have a very specific plumaria that they want to plant. And it's a plumaria that is their kupuna from Kone Ohe grows. And so they're choosing to grow that particular plumaria in their garden. So that's the kind of flexibility you have as a grower. And then the project will help to source. And if we don't propagate it, then we will help to retail buy that so that you can get started.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Very good. Okay, community, go ahead. Question for Sylvia, I think you have a question.
I'm a grower. I'm just wondering if you're growing stuff? And because I'm a grower, I do medicinal. For those things, is that down the road? An option for that? Because like plumaria, I know the sap is also can be used for cancer, fight off cancer. So certain plumaria, then also certain hibiscus, also for mental health and so forth. So it's not just the flower portion part. So I'm wondering if you are looking also for the growers that are also medicinal?
That's a great question. We do. We have a grower who also does oils, aromatics with pohinahina, lavender and others. So as part of their design, they are designing as to what they do. They already have some lei plants, but they're also thinking, you know, some other plants that have medicinal as well as aromatic oils, that kind of thing. So the short answer is yes. Counts, all of that counts. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Community, I see no other questions. Board members, no questions? Online, no questions? Okay, go ahead, Aaron.
Thank you, Sylvia. I was wondering if you got a chance after this wonderful rain to check on anybody's plants?
So I will say, of the growers that we have, the commercial growers, you know, they have their results of that. And we haven't had any that we've distributed that got destroyed by rain. But if it is, that is data. Yep, yep. So the other thing the project provides is what we call technical assistance. Because of our agreement with Citar at the Urban Garden Center, the extension agent comes out to the site and then we'll walk the property with the grower and see, okay. Oh, yeah, coconut rhinoceros beetle for sure. Oh, plumaria wevo beetle. Oh, you know, the gardenia, you know, all the black soot stuff. So part of that is that they provide some examples of, you know, things to prevent that, how to stop that, when you plant, how to trim back, things like that. So the project also provides that kind of technical assistance to help growers with their growing. And so if it's, okay, all my plumaria went under the water? Okay, data. And then hanaho, you know, the next planting. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Sylvia. Yes, so I do believe she still has handouts on that table. So if you have any further questions, please get in touch with her. If you are able to do the survey, please do. I think this is a great program that will help us partner with organizations like Hanaikai Ulu Scrappers Union. Thank you, guys. Aloha, thank you so much. Thank you. Awesome, that was so refreshing. Very good. Awesome, Sylvia, thank you so much. Okay, so moving on in the agenda, we have Farrington Estates presentation being presented by Doldalau Drafting. And we have Randall with us and he brought his team. So Randall, thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you very much, everyone. Just want to say thank you to the Neighborhood Board and then the community for all the support. It's good to see so much participation from the community. Anyway, without further ado, you can... Okay, so my name is Randall Doldalau. I'm the engineer for Doldalau Drafting, kind of my company that I kind of just started. But basically, what we're doing is we're, I'm presenting this residential project in your community. It's going to be four single-family homes on the west side. Next slide. Just the agenda for you guys. What I'm going to explain is just the summary permits that we got to do. Project location, the site plan, some photos, and then go over the environmental impact. So as you can see, that's generally the location of the project along Farrington Highway. As you head more west, you're going to end kind of the residential area and then you'll see it driveway going up. Next slide. So on the top right, you can kind of see a photo of the parcel in particular. There's a bus stop right in front, in front of the rock wall. But that, those three existing buildings kind of help you identify where the lot is. Again, the project location is 871360 Farrington Highway, Waianae. This project is located in the special management area. And the reason why I'm on here is because I'm the engineer that's hired to do the environmental assessment that's required for the special management area. We anticipate that this project will have no significant impact to the community or any of the natural resources surrounded. And pretty exciting for the community, these units, the four units are going to be available for purchase, free simple, fee simple, possibly in like the next two years, we're roughly thinking. Going to be roughly around the $800,000 cost price. Next slide. So again, just an overview. It's, we're going to be constructing four additional double-story, so two-story, single-family residence. Each resident has four bedrooms, a covered lanai and a three-car garage. Improvements on the site includes water. So we got to build water pipes to get, you know, just water infrastructure for the buildings, sewer, electricity and communications. And then it's kind of good to know, and you'll see in the next slide, that this one driveway or there is one driveway that, existing driveway that everyone kind of uses for access. Next slide. So the land use ordinance, this is a, the property is zoned as R5, which means that there's a 10-foot setback from the front property and then five feet on the sides, which we have a lot of space. The property kind of goes uphill quite a while. And then the buildings are not to exceed 25 foot. So try not to block your neighbor's view of the beautiful scene that you guys have here is very important to us, so. So the permits we anticipate is the special management area, special management area use permit. So that's a permit for any shoreline property or any shoreline building that's being built. Typical building permits, possibly little stockpiling permits, not anticipated because the site is already graded. We've already got a sewer connection application. So we do know that the sewer infrastructure can handle the four new homes. And then Eko has got to approve, Border Water Supply has got to approve. And we're going to, I don't think we're going to need that street usage permit because all the work can be done on the property. We don't anticipate any traffic or any stops along Farrington Highway. So that is a positive. Next slide. Okay, again, just showing the location on the island of Oahu in Nanakuli, beautiful Nanakuli. 871360. As you can see on the bottom left, the lot goes pretty far back. Next slide. And then again, just a view of what you're coming up as you're heading along Farrington Highway. The developmental area is right behind the three buildings, so it's not going to block anyone's view. Next slide. So this is kind of the site plan. You see Farrington Highway on the bottom. The three existing buildings you can see at the bottom. And then surrounded in red is where they anticipate building the new four units. Next slide. This is just an overlay, kind of showing you what it's going to look like. Unit F on the top left, unit G top right, and then D and F on the bottom. Next slide. So photos of the existing buildings. Recently found out that the existing buildings have already been sold. So yeah, they're no longer available for sale. But new families have been able to buy it and then join the community. Next slide. Sorry, guys, technical. So it's supposed to show the layout. Board members, I don't know if you guys have this, but in front of you guys, there should be copies of the report. It kind of shows you all the layouts. I apologize for the community for not being able to show that. But it's basically all units have a three-bedroom or a three-car garage on the bottom. At the bottom, there's a common area along with a one-bedroom and then a bathroom. And then as you go up to the second floor, there's common area, three bedrooms and then three-bedroom and bathroom all up there. Scroll down a little further. Oh, man, sorry. What's that? Four bedrooms and two baths. Four bedroom, two baths. Again, I apologize for this, sorry. We could just continue forward to slide maybe 18 or 18. So there's supposed to be photos of the elevation plans. But you can see that the two-story doesn't, is within like the 25-foot limit. Move on to the next slide. So this is where my bread and butter comes into as far as the environmental impact. So physical impacts, any impacts anticipated to the ground or the soil, we don't anticipate any impacts. It'll just be short-term construction, which will be like, when the construction is completed, we're going to backfill. For stormwater runoff... For stormwater runoff, city and county requires that you guys do BMPs. So filtered socks and silt fences, making sure that none of the soil or runoff falls into Farrington Highway or worse into the storm drain. So low impact for that. And then also we anticipate low impact on the coastal waters because just not that much runoff from the property and the small footprint being exposed during construction. Pending any questions, if you have any questions. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, very good. Before we get to questions, I just wanna do a time check. It's 8:51. This is the last presentation and we still have officials' monthly reports. So if questions can be concise, go ahead, Board Member Myers, then Board Member Ayol, and Board Member Corona, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. For time management, I'd like to make a motion first and then when we have discussions and questions, then we can vote on the motion. Because this, this organization, oh, I'm sorry, this Farrington Estates developer came to us our zoning, housing and zoning committee meeting twice, two meetings. They answered every question, et cetera, et cetera. And our, our committee have moved to support them. So if I can make the motion first? Okay. The Nanakuli Miley Neighborhood Board supports Farrington Highway Estates project at 87-1360 Farrington Highway, tax map key 8-7-006-010.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second for that motion?
Any committee members?
So we can open up for discussion?
Yeah, I can, I'll second it.
David, we're trying to manage time, so, okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You made your motion. So I'm asking for a second so we can go into discussion. So do we have a second?
Before I second it, my question's for NCO here is if we go into discussion, does the community still have the opportunity to ask their questions in that discussion phase? Since there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, David, because I think you have attended agents' meetings. I'm just gonna clarify for him.
I understand, but his question was directed to NCO, so we'll let Jeffrey answer. Thank you.
So with the motion on the floor, we can have discussion, open question for the board to discuss the motion and then of course vote on it. The community can ask their questions to the developer who's here following the motion and the voting.
Thank you. All right, I second.
Okay, very good. And we are open for discussion. All right. Board members, go ahead, questions for, go ahead, Board Member Ayol and then Board Member Tector, go ahead.
My only question would be, the backside of it, the Malka side of what you're building, the hillside? Do you see any runoff in this last scene? Did you check the backside of that property?
Shoot, I, I haven't personally checked, but I have the developer's representative over here that may be able to answer that for you, sir.
Hi, I'm Ki'ala. Erosion control certified person for this project. And I did, there was runoff and it was minimal. It was minimal.
Okay, very good. Board Member Tector?
What is protocol for listing a sale before it's even sold, let alone finalized?
Yeah, well, we didn't really list it. That's just the number that we anticipate it's gonna be at during the sale.
But it's sold, you sold?
Oh, no, 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 no. The, the existing buildings on the property are, have been sold. So, but the new four buildings that are being built, they anticipate selling it at that price later on. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Um, well, your protocol, do you have to list it? Or can you sell it before it's listed, the other four?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure. It'd be depend on the developer, whether or not they want to list it or open it up or sell it before. Yeah, I wouldn't be able to answer that right now. Oh, they're gonna wait till it's done and then they're gonna list it. Yeah.
Very good. Awesome. And just a reminder, this is the drafting company, not the developers. Okay, okay, very good. Sorry, I apologize, Board Members. Any other questions before I move to community? Go ahead, Board Member Corona.
Just, just one question. During the committee meetings, you had mentioned about mountain mitigations for the screening of any rockfall. So is that still in your development plan to put that up there?
The rockfall barrier?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then we also discussed issue or concerns with the, that existing driveway. It's could become a shared driveway. So the construction getting up there was pretty tight. So I just wanted to make sure that that's still being discussed as far as mitigating the traffic flow up there because there's only one way in and then one way out. It's a steep grade to get any type of heavy equipment up there, your excavation for grading trucks, et cetera. I might have a hard time getting up there. So I'm just, that was my biggest concern, one of our biggest concerns, so.
Right, right. And the driveway that is there now is more than 20 feet? Yes. So a fire apparatus can actually, you have to meet the 20 feet in order for a fire apparatus to get up there.
Okay, very good. Hold on one second. Okay, I just wanna make sure that, Board Member Corona, you answered your, you asked your question? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Okay. That's it for Board Members. We'll go ahead and open it up to community. Go ahead, up to the microphone, please state your name for the records.
Sure, Erin, Kani Haikala. And, okay, yeah, it sounded like you said the four units were already sold. But then you said the units that are already there are sold. And is that on the left side or the right side? Because I know people have been living there. And if they're, have already been sold, they're already completed houses, right? Existing. They have already been sold. So it's one company that owns that whole driveway? Okay. I was wondering, um, is it, did you say it's one acre each? Or the total plan is one acre, 1.28? And that is a, one driveway goes up. So you are right here, you say there's landing and it's low impact. And it's low impact because I'm not sure if the trees are covering it or because you've been laying it out flat? That's my question.
Okay, very good. Whoever would like to answer that?
So the, the area there has already been graded. So no grading, it's like already flat. You can kind of see it from the areas. And then just like residential homes typically are low impact infrastructures, like just normal day-to-day activities, minimal, you know, water, sewer. It's just lower impact on the natural resources such as like the coastal waters and then, you know, coastal waters, land use, socioeconomic. So it all just provides a home for the community that desperately needs it. But yeah, anyway, hopefully that answers your question.
My, my last question was, is all this already been approved? Water, sewer, electric? It says approved, approved. But is it just, you wrote approved or it's already, there's already paperwork? You know, I was just wondering, is it already been approved?
Okay, we'll, we'll allow him to answer the question.
So sewer has been approved, so sewer application has been approved. I think for water, you gotta create the building plans first and then submit it to Board of Water Supply. They calculate the usage, so that hasn't been approved yet. And then, right, sewer, Hiko? Yeah. Well, so for the most part, we're still going through the, that's why I'm here. So I'm still working on the SMA use major permit. Also working on the building permits right now, sewer application is good. And then still needs approval for Hawaiian, Hawaiian Electric and then Board of Water Supply. So we're, we're not quite there, but we're still in the process of getting it done.
Okay, very good. I believe we have another question. Go ahead to the microphone, please. I believe this will be our last question. Go ahead, thank you.
So I have two questions. So when you folks are talking about the driveway and you folks have shared access, so that driveway is an access easement? Okay, so the owner on the top owns the driveway? Okay, and yous, you folks have already talked to him about use of that? Oh, same owner for that? Okay, okay. And then the 25-foot height limit, I'm assuming is from the level grade? And this, and you know, I looked at the elevation, it's, this is like a three-story, two-story? Yeah, so garage, okay. That's, that was my, I think my only concern because when you're talking about a 25-foot height limit on level grade, that's already high. Yeah, so now we're looking at four residential units that's up against the mountain. It's actually higher than probably what is up there already. So, but you know, I just, that was just one of my concerns was the height limit and it being on the level.
Yep. So yeah, everything's within that 25-foot limit parameter that DPP has. And then, yeah, I also have my contact information on the back. If you guys have any questions, please shoot me an email. That'd be great. But we thank you for your time and everyone have a good night. Thank you, guys.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the vote. Yeah, we'll go ahead and move on to the vote. The motion has been made, it's been seconded. The motion is to support the Farrington Estates project. So we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Sorry. Naomi on line?
Aye.
Uh, okay. And then any abstentions? Any abstentions abstain? Okay, very good. Okay, all right. The motion passes with unanimous support. Thank you very much. Randall, thank you very much for your team. We'll go ahead and get a letter off so you folks can move forward in your process. Thank you very, for taking the time to be in our housing committee, going through all the questions. We appreciate that. Housing Chair and committee members, we appreciate you for taking your time to vet this very important process. So we will be in touch. Board Member Corona will give you your support letter. So thank you very much. Mahalo, mahalo. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on in our agenda. So first up is Governor's Report and we have Gary with us. Thank you in person. Thank you, Gary.
Hi, Chair of Court, members of the board, Gary Yamashroya from representing the Governor's Office. I just have one thing that I was approached offline a couple of meetings ago is about speed bumps on Haikala. I did reach out to DHHL and Board Member Corona. I'm not sure if you had already spoken to them about it, but apparently they had some funding for speed bumps, emergency speed bumps, but they used that funding further up after the fatalities that occurred. So they had to move some driver feedback signs. And the movement of those driver feedback signs precludes them from adding speed bumps in lower, in the lower part. So they would need funding to have the lower speed bumps in, but they would, it's not really in their plans as of yet. So I know that you were trying to get DHHL at your transportation committee meetings. I don't know if they've ever shown up. But I, I wanted to get, the second thing I wanted to point out is if any of the committee, the committee members are having, or chairs are having difficulty getting in touch with state representatives from the different departments, reach out to me. I have a contact another way and I'll see if I can get a response for you on whether you want them at the meeting or if you have a question. So that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you very much, Gary. Excuse me. We'll open it up for questions, Board Members. Any questions for Gary? Board Members, okay. If you could actually reach out to the Chair of DHHL and ask him to attend. Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. June 21st, please. Thank you very much. Community, any questions for Gary? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my question is, I read about the Board of Water Supply, Erin, in today's paper about their...
Hold on one second, we're not with Board of Water Supply yet.
No, I'm asking the Governor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so they had written in the paper that the cyber attacks from China and Iran on our Board of Water Supply. And I wanna know if, what is the, um, what is the, what is the like, um, how do they feel, the Governor, about our gas being, I don't know, attacked? And our, our gas? They, they're talking about water. What about our gas in the ground? That's all.
Very good. Thank you.
It's a very, very good question. I mean, obviously there's concern about infrastructure, critical infrastructure, whether it's electric, gas. So luckily, we have Department of Homeland Security and High EMO working on creating a critical infrastructure protection plan, whether it's hacking or whether it's any type of vulnerabilities that they may have. So it's something that the state is taking very seriously. And I know that they're in the process of putting together a plan to address especially utilities, as we know, it can be vulnerable. As far as water, that's the responsibility of the city and county in the different counties. Yeah, 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 but that doesn't mean that the city and the state don't work hand-in-hand in addressing issues like that. It's actually a great question.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, community, any other questions for Governor's Rep? Go ahead.
Yes, so can I ask the Governor, you can tell him Pikachu said so? Is he willing to support a joint effort, which I said earlier, you know, with the military, the west side, to do something? We're already looking at 120 days outs. We know the Army has training in August at Schofield. So we're looking at September. Obviously, we wanna honor September 11th. Obviously, we got the veterans memorial coming up. So we're probably looking at the third week or fourth week of September, if we can do something, if that the Governor's open willing to help support. Thank you.
Close it. I think I, they would probably need more details, but definitely, yeah. Yeah, I'm the messenger, so I can, I can send the message if you would let me know the details.
Hi, my name is Blessings. I won't shoot the messenger. I've been trying to get ahold of Mr. Green since Lahaina fires and he hasn't returned my calls. And I also have been leaving messages for him, emails, and coming down to his office for housing, Section 8 with the state. I would appreciate if he returned my call or get back with me and I'd like to have a meeting with him.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do you have another question for Governor's Rep? If not, we've gotta move on. Okay, last question. Okay. All right, very good. Let's go ahead and move on. Go ahead, really quick.
I was wondering if the Governor has found a new dump site for the trash?
Okay.
You have to answer it. Maybe you have to go back and talk to him. Our trash, you know, on the west side, needs a new dump site. We don't want it on the west side. You gotta look for a place because Wyman Alagoat is closing down. And we've taken the trash for the last 50, 60 years.
Okay, we get it, we get it. So Gary, I'm not sure if you wanna answer, but we do have Mary's rep- Okay, we get it, we get it. So, uh, Gary, I'm not sure if you want to answer, but we do have Mayor's Rep coming up, so we can defer that question to Erwin.
That's what I was gonna just say. It's, it's a city and county issue, so I'll defer.
Very good. Gary, thank you so much for being here with us in person. We're gonna move on, uh, to, uh, Mayor's Rep, and he's gonna go straight into Board of Water Supply. So Erwin, thank you for being with us in person.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and, uh, members and everyone in the community. Erwin Kowatwa with Board of Water Supply. I have submitted the Mayor's Rep report already, so I don't have anything new to add to that report. Happy to take any questions, though.
Okay, very good. Uh, Board members, any questions for Mayor's Rep? Mayor's Rep first. Uh, Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Edwin, I really, really love your reports, because it's the first time we've ever had it in writing. May I kindly ask that any of the community questions were asked like at last month, or for example, this month, when you bring their written report, can you read it so that the community members who didn't attend, but maybe they watched the video, they can get their answers? Because there's been times when community members go, nobody even answered my question. And, but yet, you did answer it. When we get the reports, we basically take it home, but the video and the minutes is posterity, and the video is now the new minutes for NCO. NCO doesn't share anything, uh, you know, the video is the minutes. So you can say the answers, because there are several things on here that I really want the community to hear, like the outdoor warning siren answer, but also the new landfill site answer. So if you can go ahead and read it, I mean, you can read it quickly, but at least it'll be documented.
Okay.
Uh, maybe the siren and the landfill.
All right. Let me summarize.
You can just summarize, please.
Page two, you started off at page two.
Sure, there was a question, um, last month regarding the siren, um, serving the Nanakuli-
Well, you can start from number one. Uh, no, for the sake of time, I'm gonna ask you to summarize, and you can just address the siren and the landfill.
Yeah, sure. So the siren, um, it is a, uh, a piece of equipment that's, um, owned and operated by the state, and, um, they do know that it's requiring repairs and it's planned to be repaired soon. With respect to the landfill, um, the mayor is committed to not, uh, putting the next landfill here on the, um, uh, Leeward Coast, and, um, there's still work going on to identify a particular location.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh...
Chair, I have a question now.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so regarding the outdoor warning siren, it's, the answer was that, um, the forecasting work will be done in fall. And then you had some mediation as far as can they watch the, you know, the other ways of finding out there's an emergency? My concern is that this area has a, it's a dense population in Ayang Homestead. And many of them are kapuna, because it's a very old homestead. And what I'm concerned is that, and they don't hear the siren, and they're not say at the TV, then we're gonna have a Lahaina situation where they're not aware of a fire or impending emergency. So is there a way that, uh, Haima can make sure to expedite the part? Because as the community member stated, this, this fire, uh, this warning siren has not been operable for years, for many years. And so this is another situation like we had in Maili, where we had Catherine Hamada talked about, that they've been ignored. So is, can this be accelerated as far as a response because of this population in Ayang Homestead?
Okay, I'll do that. Sure.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, community, any questions for Mayor's Rep? Go ahead to the microphone, please.
Aloha. Um, so mines? Maybe not the question, but, um, I'm talk, I'm looking at number three, assessment conversion, CESPU conversion. So this is something that our homestead is working on as well. Uh, we just had a meeting on Thursday. We had representatives from the Department of Health, Department of Hawaiian Homelands, and the EPA. We would like a representative from the city and county to also be involved in our, um, efforts to get our families converted. Currently, our homestead has 420 homes. Of that 420 homes, about 110 are still on either CESPU or SEPTIC, majority of them CESPU. Um, our Homestead Community Association is trying to work with the powers that be to make sure that we're proactive, so that when you folks are ready, we're ready. Um, we understood from the last meeting last week that the Department of Hawaiian Homelands right now is currently in our homestead doing improvements on the, um, the sewer. And once that's done, they're gonna dedicate it to the sea. And so I guess my question to you folks is, is it gonna be the city then that's gonna come in and do the sewer lateral to each house that needs it? Okay, okay. And so, um, if we can get a city and county wastewater representative to be a part of our group, um, what we're trying to do is we're trying to, we're trying to keep our residents informed, and so that way, when the time comes, we have everything in place for them. Okay.
Okay.
I'll get together with you afterwards and get the details on the meeting site and the dates and contact information, and then I'll talk to, invite to get a representative there. They're very shy, you know?
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Before we move on to BWS, we have a question online, so, uh, if you can, uh, unmute yourself, Salseros. Uh, go ahead, unmute yourself and state your name for the minutes, please.
Hello, Kale Salsero. Um, my question to the mayor, you know, I noticed the website had changed it when you go for do the neighborhood, uh, search here, and you have to go under event. You know, I, I wish the mayor would, would have more collaboration, because you know how long it took me for teaching my kapunas? And they got used to to the old website, how to navigate to go to the meetings. Now I gotta teach them all over again. Come on, give me a break. There's a lot of kapunas I gotta work with. You know, so that is one of the other concerns. Um, the other one was that, um, SR 53, um, the working team that we had suggested at the town hall for the, with the, for the Nanakuli and, uh, Waina Neighborhood Board. And that's the proactive action that my husband Austin Salsero brought. Do you know of anything, uh, uh, you know, um, suggestions for the mayor? Because we gave him a proactive solution. Not a reactive, a proactive solution. And I would love to see that solution come true, because, um, 96792, whether it's Nanakuli or Waina, it's all 96792. Uh, we need more action in our, uh, government officials to help, to help us to be proactive.
Samantha, remember, you had to assign two people from the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board to this task force to join up with the city, uh, Mayor's Task Force. Don, Donna Puna, Sam Moku, and Krishna Jeram. And with two assigned Neighborhood Board officials.
So we want to know what's the outcome, and if you, uh, the mayor has anything coming up, because we, we're looking for, you know, um, proactive solutions, and we found it. So we need, um, our mayor to be proactive too.
Okay, we'll let Erwin, uh, respond. Go ahead, our-
Yeah, I'll take that back and, uh, follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, we're to Board of Water Supply. Thank you, Erwin.
Thank you for Board of Water Supply. Same thing. I've submitted my report. I don't have anything new beyond that, uh, what's on that report. Um, respect to Board Member, your question earlier. I'll talk to the Neighborhood Board Commission and see if we can, or Neighborhood Board, um, office, and see if we can have, uh, our reports available online, on Google Online, so that everyone can get access to them. I think there's a library or there's a place that we can put them.
We have a Google Drive. Very good. Thank you, Erwin. Okay, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Board Member Myers?
Mahalo, Chair. In your report, you stated, um, because there was a question about what is the budget to replace this aging 2,100 miles of pipeline, and especially those that are 100 years old. Um, your answer provided three fiscal years of budget, which came up to over $2 billion when I added it. Um, in your answer, you were saying that if you guys were to replace the 2,100 miles of pipe in your system at one time, at the eight-inch per mi, uh, cost per mile, it would be approximately $2.1 billion, which aligns with your fiscal year '23, '24, '25. But I do understand that you were saying that your 42-inch pipes cost more. Now, my question is, um, at the end of fiscal year '25, how much percent of your pipes, 2,100 miles worth, will be over 100 years old?
Um, right now, it's about, um, it's about 5% of our system. It's a very small number about the system. So we have 2,100 miles islandwide. So when we're trying to replace 21 miles, that's only 10%. So of that, there's a smaller fraction that's 100 years and over. Most of them are in the range of 30 to 75 years old.
So what is that life of the pipes then, usually?
Well, right now, the life, the pipelines are designed to last anywhere from 50 up to 75 years. That's what they're designed to do.
Okay, so over 100 years old, what is the percentage is gonna be after fiscal year '25? Because I remember you gave us the presentation about the price increases, and it's gonna start '24, '25, '26, et cetera. So I understand funds are gonna be coming in. So I want to understand how Board of Water Supply is trying to tip the scale so that we don't have water breaks.
So it's all about, yeah, pipeline, plus there's also part of the rate increases was for improvements to facility, number one, expansion of additional water sources, um, treatment facilities. And so it's a combination, even things like cybersecurity, cyber improvements for, for our system. The rate increases encompasses all of that, not just only pipelines.
Maybe next month, if you can come back with, like, how much is it, how much of your pipes percentage-wise is currently over the 70-year threshold? And then how much of it is over the 100-year threshold? And then what is the goal as far as to address each of those percentages to bring it down after fiscal year '20, '25?
Okay, I can do that. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much, Erwin. Uh, community, any questions for Board of Water Supply?
I have a whole journal for this. So we know we recorded this four-hour, 21-minute meeting the other day in the rain at Commandees Schools. And, uh, Border Waters split hired a consultant named Jonathan Schuer from Kahalavai Consultants to talk, to talk to us about the 1987 Hawaii Water Code. Are you familiar with that? And they're supposed to file a petition to protect the waters of Waina and Nanakuli and make a petition for this special water use permit. I called Border Water Supply on Monday to follow up. They had no clue what I was talking about. Send me the communications department to leave a message, but I physically spoke to Kelson. I filmed them live on Facebook. Where is this petition to file this paper, or how do you do it, or how do I get a copy?
I'll go find out, and I'll get you a copy.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. That's not the right answer.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next, community member, go ahead.
Uh, two, three months ago, Board of Water Supply, um, had informed the community with the Neighborhood Board in Waina that there was gonna be a program issued for this specific site of the island for kapunas and, uh, family facing hardship and help to pay for the Border Water Supply's, uh, bills. What is coming of it? Because after that meeting, I never heard anything about it. So I wanted to put it out there with the community. What is that? It's been two, three months.
Yeah, there is a program to help, um, individuals that having, struggling to, uh, pay their water bill. And so you just have to contact the Board of Water Supply's, um, customer, customer care division and ask about it, and then they will make, put you in, put that person in contact with who provide the information and who to contact.
Thank you. I just wanted to put it out there into the community.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, we're actually gonna move on in our agenda, so thank you very much, uh, community. Erwin, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you next month with some great responses. Mahalo, uh, so Board, I'm gonna actually go out of order to take the, uh, officials that are actually, the monthly reports of the officials that are actually here. So I'm gonna move, uh, down to Army Representative Lieutenant Colonel Jason Cappas. Uh, if you, uh, could give your report, thank you so much for joining us in person. We appreciate you.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, Chairpeople, community. Um, Jason Cappas, I'm your Army representative. We have a theme of environmental topics coming on in the Board, which is interesting, because I have two updates on that. But before I get to that, I want to talk first about the Training Advisory. For the rest of May, there will be artillery and mortar training happening from the 20th through the 31st, both day and night, and aviation training on the 20th second. Also, there's an ongoing joint exercise going on this week and for the rest of the week. So there will be a lot more traffic going in and out of Wheeler Airfield. Um, for the first environmental update, so there's an Oahu draft environmental impact statement. So the Army is preparing this draft EIS for the Army Training Land Retention of State Lands Within the Oahu Area. The Army proposes to retain up to 6,000 acres of state land to support continued military training. This is an administrative action that does not include any construction, modernization, or changes to ongoing training. It will be published in the coming months, and there will be a 60-day public review period. During that period, the public can comment either by writing or in person. We'll have meetings. There'll be meetings at three locations across the island. More details will follow as we get closer, but if you have any questions about that, you could contact the, the Comrel Department. Their number is 808-787-2140. And finally, we just recently learned this week that the islands of Hawaii were one of five states that were included in the Sentinel Landscape Partnership. Uh, so the Sentinel Landscape Partnership is comprised of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Department of Defense, and Department of the Interior, which designated five new Sentinel Landscape sites last week. In these landscapes, natural and working lands thrive alongside military installations and ranges. So this spans over 2 million acres in the, in the Hawaii areas and focuses on prioritizing conservation, agricultural, and DOD mission lands on these islands. Given the scarcity, scarcity, scarcity of land, these areas offer a chance to promote the conservation of natural and cultural resources, mitigate threats from encroachment, and promote land use that complements military activities. More information can be found at thesentinellandscares.org, and I perused this really fast, because I didn't know what it was about. And there's, there's many states that already have these that are related to military bases, and there's, there's a lot of opportunities for landowners for grants. I know Arizona has one for like iceberg lettuce growth, and then there's improving public use areas like trailheads. You can get grants for improving trailheads. And then rental payments, if you plant native trees around watershed moments to kind of improve the, um, the landscape. So that's all I have. Open for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Army? Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Chair, first I wanted to acknowledge how you've been managing our board meetings where you're giving the people, um, those that come to report.
Hold on one second. I just want to make sure that we honor his time. So if your question is directed towards the Army, just report.
Acknowledge that first.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for the port of order. Um, and then I wanted to, I got your report. The Chair had emailed it to us, and then there was three, uh, you had three sessions in, in with our West Coast, um, to address some of our concerns. Yes, three sessions in April. I see that David Corona had attended, one of them in the photos, um, and some other key leaders in our community. I appreciate that you had engaged with our community about it, especially Makua. Um, so out of those three sessions, what is the follow-up regarding that?
That's a great question. I'd have to, I, I didn't participate in those. Those were Army leadership above me, Garrison leadership in different areas of the, the island. So I'll follow up on, on that. I know a lot of them talked about this draft statement that's gonna come up in the very near future as the, the land lease expires here shortly for the Army, and there's a lot of discussions about that. But for further follow-up actions, I'd have to follow up and get back to you.
Okay, because they did mention some historical situations with, um, the military in our community. So I just want, if next meeting, if you can follow up and say if the information was just gathering, or if you're gonna be able to tell us if there's, um, deadlines that you guys are projecting to stop doing bombings in Makua, et cetera, et cetera. So, mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Army? If not, we're gonna go ahead, uh, to, go ahead, Board Member IO.
No, I just want to clarify what he's saying, because we attended the meeting at, uh, I think it was, uh, 604 Restaurant, the Garrison, Garrison Group of People. There were all the people there that have to deal with-
There were all the people there that have to deal with Makua as well as Lualulele Navy Road. Uh, and what he's saying is that in the near future, which is gonna be this year, that these meetings that they're planning is planning to, if I can put this this way, military route, after they do their environmental impact statements for Makua and Lualulele as well as Oahu Law on the Big Island. They're doing that, uh, to get ready, really, for twenty-twenty-nine when the lease, or they got to get off the land, if they get off. But they're not. So, uh, that being strategically said, the Army's gonna have to have the land. They, they're gonna use it because they gotta train. Seriously, they gotta train. Uh, we, the, the people that live on the island, according to what was said at this meeting, it's that merger. It's that merger. How we gonna merge and how we gonna figure this out? Because we, the community wants the land, not the state of Hawaii. This is a crown lands, that's why. Yeah? So we don't want the state to get it. But in essence, the military's got it, but they have to give it to somebody, and somebody might be the state instead of the community, instead of us, okay? D H H L. That, that was it. But I just wanted to clarify what you're saying, and you're saying it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Board Member. Uh, community questions? Go ahead. Up to the microphone, please state your name for the minutes.
Uh, Erin Coniayakla. I wanna ask, um, the Army, I guess, if, uh, uh, about Kapaa Kauai, how they're want Kapaa Kauai too. I think it's over, it's hundreds of acres.
Okay. Was?
Yeah, so if you're asking about a specific area, I could get with you afterwards, and I can find out about it. I can get a follow-up back to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Colonel. We appreciate your time. Thank you for being with us. Uh, we look forward to seeing you next month. Oh, uh, did you have a quick, please make it quick. Go up to the microphone, state your name.
Aloha, she'll be billionaire. I already have the dates here, and, uh, governor bought in, and so did the city. So here's some potential dates I already wrote for the community. September fourteen, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. For all of you guys to help participate, because we have local vendors, live music, and all of you guys to be there to help support.
Great, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on in our agenda. Uh, we're going to, uh, go ahead to Kika, uh, for council member Tupola. Kika, thank you so much for being with us in person. Uh, you can go ahead and give your report for council member.
Thank you, Chair and Board Members, for your time. Um, we just, we don't have much to report, but we do have our flyer in our town hall that's coming up. It's the crime town hall. Um, as you guys know, our last one was at, uh, Arca Safety. So this is a follow-up from that, but even more to the mayor's, uh, town hall. Um, that will be at Honouliu School. So we'll have it all part of our district. So the next part will be in Kapulee on the twenty-eighth of May, uh, which is next week, Tuesday. Um, and then in your folders and to the community, we have, uh, Resil twenty-four eighty-one. Uh, this resol is urging the Department of Environmental Services to provide twenty-four-seven operational services to Waimea Community Center. And urging the Department of Parks and Recreations to provide increased maintenance at Leeward Oahu Parks and recreational facilities. Um, we did give this last board, but we did have new amendments to the resolution. And it will be in committee tomorrow in the zoning committee, uh, before council.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kika. Board Member, any questions, uh, for council member Tupola? Uh, Board Member Corona? Okay.
Yes, um, can you talk with her? Um, and I just, I just saw this come out, and so I'm trying to bring it up real quick. Uh, resolution, uh, I think it was, uh, is, is about the, uh, game rooms. Uh, there's a, I know we had the bill out there for discussion that was up through the committee, but then, uh, um, then I think just, uh, Mr. Waters just put out a, a resolution establishing a task force of gambling rooms. So I just kinda wanted some understanding more about that because it just seemed like, uh, you know, that they put the bill up there. It doesn't seem like that's going anywhere. So they are gonna establish a task force now, which to me, task force sometimes mean just push it off and it, and it stays pushed off for a while. Nothing ever gets done. Uh, so I just wanted to just kinda ask her what her thoughts are on that, or if this is a good process for establishing this task force.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, community, any questions? Oh, um, okay, go ahead, uh, online. So Sados, if you could unmute yourself and ask your question to council members, right? Kika?
Aloha, Kika. Kika, you know when you had the Arca Safety Town Hall, uh, crime, uh, town hall meeting, yeah, in Waimea? You know, something gotta be better because, uh, they like to text the thing on, on your iPhone, you know? They're gonna do a town hall, they should open it like the website they call the Neighborhood Board one is. Because not all the questions is being answered, and when people's taking their time to go there. So the town hall, we can't just sit there and then start texting on our phone. You know, we, uh, we like to be proactive in things, what our community is going through. And so, you know, the microphone or something like that, instead of they pick and choose to answer what questions is beneficial for them to answer. When you get your community wants straight answers, they come out straight, it's not being buffered. So I, I would, you know, influence the, uh, councilwoman to do something like that in the future on the town hall, instead of, uh, have to text things or do virtual, because not everybody can go at the town hall. So that is just my, um, you know, suggestion.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, oh, we gotta mute. Hmm. Thank you very much. Uh, Kika, thank you for being with us. Uh, we're moving on to, oh, online. Um, oh, uh, oh, okay, we have Patrice for Senator Shimabukuro. Uh, can you unmute yourself and give the report?
Aloha, Senator's actually online. She's.
Oh, great. Oh, that must be her phone number then. Okay, very good. Senator Shimabukuro, thank you so much. You're, we hear you.
Yes, aloha, everyone. Um, okay, I have some exciting, um, CIPs to report. Um, for, there's for Pa'akea Road, three point four five million in the budget. Uh, and DOT estimates that within about a year, they should be able to open that locked portion of Pa'akea. Yay, for daily, um, second access route. Um, also, um, two million dollars was allocated in the budget, um, a couple of years ago. And this was for the purchase of the old Kaiser Building on Saint John's Road uh, for the DOE to have it Papahana or Kaiona Alternative, uh, Learning Center. And that purchase is scheduled to go through, um, next month. Um, so very exciting for that. Um, some of the bills that, um, I got through this year, uh, SB twelve fifty-eight. Um, this is for the management of the end of the Ferington Highway, you know, that starts at Makua and ends at Kaina Point. Requires DLNR to come up with a management plan, uh, kinda similar to what they've done at other state parks, some success at places like Hyanna on Kauai. Um, also SB two-three-two-two, uh, this is a Surf Rider Foundation bill, um, that the DOH is, um, this could be, they've committed to carrying out the bill, which says that even during brownwater advisories, which is what we are experiencing right now after their heavy rain, they will continue to test tier-one beaches. Um, SB two-four-three-nine, this is the, um, adult statute limit bill. Uh, and so these are, it's a bill where adults who were sexually assaulted, um, there will be a two-year window, um, where even though the statute limits had expired, they can still file lawsuits. Um, SB three thousand, menstrual product, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, four hundred thousand, yeah, gone to the budget. And this is to provide free menstrual products in state buildings. And then finally, SB two-five-nine-one, um, this requires landowners to file with the Bureau of Conventance's burial and historical sites that they, that are on their land. And also, um, when they are in, in the midst of selling, they have to disclose to potential buyers. Um, and I'll be open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Senator. Uh, Board Member, any questions for Senator Shimabukuro? Board Member Myers, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Senator.
Aloha.
Senator, this is Jermaine. Thank you so much for the thorough, um, newsletter. And it reminded me how much I'm gonna miss your thorough newsletters, and I hope whoever follows in your seat will provide us with this type of information and updates and, um, the details about it. Um, also, thank you for providing us with a, a, a plan, um, as far as the, the information on the Pa'akea, um, W C E A R, um, to open it up twenty-four-seven. Thank you for that information, following up with the email so that our Transportation Committee can continue to, um, look into that. Um, my, uh, my, my second part of my concern or question is because you resigning and you, your ending date is May thirty-first instead of November eighth, and now the governor has to appoint someone between the time that the, now, or, I'm sorry, June first, and when the governor appoints someone, what is gonna happen to your staff as far as employment and servicing our community? And then when the governor does appoint some, um, uh, someone to replace you from June to November, um, does the staff that you had on, on board, um, continue, um, their employment through November? Or does a new person can bring in and start off with someone that they want, um, instead of your staff?
Well, that's a great question. Thank you, Jermaine. Um, uh, fortunately, um, well, that's what we heard is that my staff will remain until my, there's someone is appointed to replace me. And, um, and so that's good news. Um, however, yeah, once someone is appointed to replace me, though, they do appoint, if to hire who they choose. Um, and so, yeah, so, but, but, uh, but the good news is that they, they will be on until that appointment happens.
I, I wanna thank you for your years of service and also for your staff. Um, Sam and Patrice for being our community liaison, and Luke, and most especially for Keah, he, your, uh, Chief of Staff. He's been amazing over the years, and I, and I was most concerned about his employment especially to be continued until. And so mahalo for all that you did. Thank you so much, um, Senator Miley.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I so appreciate those kind words. Thank you so much. Yes, they have been amazing.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, Board Members, okay, uh, let's go ahead, uh, to community in the room, and then we have, uh, community online. Go ahead, state your name for the minutes, please.
I just wanted to, because we had Miley Shimabukuro on, I just wanted to do this now, before I go home. Uh, the Makaha Wine Civic Club is honoring her, uh, and, uh, that, it's our scholarship luau. And it's going to be, um, honoring Miley Shimabukuro for her retirement. And it's going to be on Sunday, November seventeenth at six oh four. And, uh, we have tables, uh, uh, individual tables. I can't see the price, but it's online. And, um, and, uh, VIP, uh, VIP table. So I just wanted to make mention since, uh, she's with us online. Aloha, Miley.
Thank, oh, thank you, Auntie Georgie. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, I don't see any community online. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Senator Shimabukuro. Thank you very much for all that you do. We appreciate you. Mahalo, and you have a good evening.
Mahalo, Samantha. Thank you so much.
All right, very good. Uh, it seems that's all the, uh, officials' reports we have. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to board business. So, uh, first item in board business, filling the vacancy for Water and Land Committee. We have a chair vacancy. Uh, do I have any, um, volunteers?
I would like, excuse me, I would like to volunteer for the.
I apologize. Go ahead, Board Member Agustin.
I would like to volunteer for the land and water. Um, but I do wanna make note that I am chairing currently the Education Committee as well as the Public Health and Safety Committee. So if I can remove myself from one committee to take on land and water, um, and if you can advise on the process of doing that, if I can do that today. And opening up the position for Public Health and Safety to another board member in conjunction with taking on land and water, especially being that we have land, uh, opportunities opening up with the state in staying involved with what's happening with Makua as well as our landfill uh, access with the Waimea Nalo Gulch.
Okay, uh, let's take care of the first, uh, item of business first, which is filling the vacancy for water and land. And then we'll move on to your motion later. Okay, very good. Uh, any other volunteers for Chair of Water and Land? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote, voice vote. All those in favor for Board Member Agustin to be the Chair of the Water and Land Committee, all. All those in support, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Board Member Hano Hano?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, unanimous in support for Board Member Agustin to be the Chair of the Water and Land Committee. Okay, uh, would you like to make a motion?
How many members do they have? Cause I know that one of the members are the Chair. You guys have three members.
I think there are three total.
I'm sorry?
There are three total.
Who are they? Cause I s- who are they? Because I thought.
For land and water? Yeah, I believe it was, who was originally voted, uh?
It was Keah Agustin and Corona?
Oh. Yeah.
So who are?
Okay, very good. So, uh, the committee members are Board Member Corona.
Cause I looked at my September meeting minutes.
So right now, we just voted that, uh, Board Member Agustin is the Chair of Water and Land, and she has one committee member, which is Board. Corona? Correct.
So there's a vacant committee member. Can I join as a committee member?
Would that be a vacancy? No, she's fine. She's fine with the one member.
But I'm asking that I would like to be a committee member.
Would you like to add on a committee member? Okay.
So am I a member or am I just a visitor?
You would be, you would be an attendee, I believe.
If I'm not a member, like, if community has come to your committee meeting and they had asked to be a member, what would you do? You would say, I'm not gonna let you be a committee member? Call him my chair. Um, I don't wanna be a committee member.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and move on. Uh, let's move on, uh.
There was a motion. Excuse me. All community and people within our community are welcome to come and participate and.
I'm a board member asking to be a member, and you're asking me to be a visitor.
Excuse me, I don't mean to argue.
Call him my.
So my question is, are we able to establish a group at this time? Because we're shifting, and so in the process of what our previous land and water committee had established, what are the current people in place? And what is the vacancy? And are we able to do that at this time? Because.
Malia, um, Malia, you guys had no.
He's addressed her as Board Member Agustin.
And no minutes. So that means you never met. So I don't know what you mean by establishing. So this is the first of the establishment. So that's why I was asking to be a member, like.
But then you withdrew your request, right? Hold on one second. Hold on. You withdrew your request, so that. You withdrew your request, so that request is no longer on the table. I am moving to the next agendized item. Okay, if this wants to be discussed, you can discuss it at your committee meeting or we can agendize it. But at this
Chair, I rescinded it because I was told to be a visitor.
Okay, that's fine.
So I want to clarify that our committees are now telling board members to be visitors.
I have attended committee meetings as an attendee and I have no problem attending.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Visitor member.
Myers.
Thank you.
I will point of order you if you do not contain yourself. I am telling you that we are moving on. I am telling you
Don't talk to me like a child.
On. Excuse me, please, 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 please don't interfere. Please don't interfere.
I'm sorry, Sergeant of Arms, point of order.
Thank you.
When you resign, then you just have to give it back to the Chair. And the Chair will continue the meeting as stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. I believe there might have been a motion to for Public Safety Committee. Was there a request, a motion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to open the position for Public Health and Safety Committee Chair. I will be moving from my position from chairmanship. And I'd like to appoint the position, if possible, to Board Member IO.
Okay, the motion is that Board Member Agustin will be resigning as Chair of the Public Safe, Public Health and Safety Committee. And she would like to nominate Board Member IO. Board Member IO has second, open for discussion. Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote. We will go ahead and take the vote, votes. Voice vote. Voice vote. Okay, Board, Board Member Myers, thank you very much for making that point. So we're going to go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor say all those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Board Member IO is now the new Chair of the Public Health and Safety. And I believe that the members that are currently a part of that committee will continue to be on that committee so that there are all right, moving on to Nana Kuli Mailei Neighborhood Board, number 36, to participate in the Nana Kuli Nights Marketplace. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Board Member Agustin to give us more information.
So we have, the request was made to Shantinihi Poli for the night markets on every third Saturday. And for community civic engagement, the goal with this is to encourage community to understand what's happening at our boards and at our capital. And so I would like to make a motion and request that the Nana Kuli Mailei Neighborhood Board be present at these night markets. We do have permission for this night market to be of no charge. And so they have already approved, the Nana Ika Ponohawaiian Civic Club has already approved for us to have this booth as they're the primary holders. And so we would create a rotation schedule amongst our board members to have at least two members per month. So it's one day out of the month if at least two of us can be present to share with the community about what's happening and also encourage more people to submit testimony, encourage them in understanding the login process of the online submissions and, and et cetera, et cetera, what's happening in our committee meetings. So I leave that motion open. If, if we can have commitment from our board, I will circulate a schedule for us to sign up and have at least two people starting June 2024, the third Saturday, all the way through the end of this 2024 year. And we can revisit this at the end of the year.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second? All right, it was seconded. Open it up for discussion. Board members, any discussion on the motion? Okay, very good. All right, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote. Yep, go ahead. All those in favor say aye. All those say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. The motion passes participation from Nana Kuli Mailei Neighborhood Board, number 36, to participate in the Nana Kuli Nights Marketplace. All right, we're moving on to approve this day, April 16th, 2024, regular minutes. Well, again, we're going to take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Okay, very good. It passes. Moving on to 2024, April 2024, Board Member attendance and community meetings. I'm going to give it over to Jeffrey. We got a few more minutes left, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm just going to go down the list that I have. Board Member IO. Use your, use your mic, please.
I'm sorry. April 27th, Waimea Cares, then in the community meeting. And then April 30th, it was Koli Koli Pass. It was a meeting with the military to visit Luululei on Koli Pass.
Member Agustin?
The Hawaiian Affairs Committee meeting, the Waimea Nalo Gulch Commission meeting online. The bill hearing for 57 and 58. The Waimea Neighborhood Board. The Nana Kuli Neighborhood Security Watch. And the Education Committee and Public Health and Safety Committee meetings.
Board Member Techor? Chair DeCort?
Waimea Neighborhood Board. Hua Kea, Maokatumakai, Island Roots Global Change Fair. And Kahumanu Learning Center Fun Fair. And that's it. Oh, sorry, Earth Week Celebration.
Board Member Kea? Board Member Myers? Use your, use your mic, please.
Thank you. April 15th and 16th, Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting. And I can't recall the legislative sessions attended, but mahalo.
Board Member Corona?
Yeah, I attended a community event for the stream cleanup of my zoning committee, city council, and that's it.
Member Ed Hano Hano? And Board Member Naomi Hano Hano?
None.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, that's it for board business. We are a few seconds away from committee reports. Chair, Transportation Committee. Chair Corona?
Yeah, for Transportation Committee, we just worked, we just worked out some processes to implement for future Transportation Committee meetings. Zoning and housing. We discussed and approved the, the development there in Nana Kuli. And then we're scheduled for transportation tomorrow night in Mailei at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, we are at the 10 o'clock hour, so I'm going to go ahead and wrap this up. Thank you very much, board members, for taking your time. Community, thank you very much for being with us. Those of us who have joined online, we appreciate you. Please drive home safe and this meeting is officially adjourned.